Welcome, West Orange, to our regularly scheduled town council meeting. Madam Clerk.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 30, 2020, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 10, 2020. Councilwoman Castelino?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Council President Mathieu Brown?
Present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
We will move on to the conference agenda. And the first item on our conference agenda are council liaison appointments for the Rent Leveling Board and Environmental Commission. Councilwoman Castelino shared with me earlier that she had a recommendation for the council.
Yes, Councilwoman, Council President. I apologize that I did not get a chance to send his resume over to you today, but I do have it. Rodolfo Rodriguez is interested in serving for the council. He has been a law, well, he's our deputy mayor. He also leads the Hispanic Foundation in the township. A resident of West Orange, an area where there are a lot of rental properties. He's very much interested in serving the community in this capacity.
Okay, and just as to, you know, to be clear, this is the consensus appointment of the council to the Rent Leveling Board.
Yes, I make a motion. I'll, if you want to do that tonight, I'll get his resume out, whatever, everybody's more comfortable.
I think, I think to be fair to our council colleagues who aren't as familiar, I know most of us are, but perhaps circulate his resume, and then we can list this for the next agenda.
Okay.
Councilwoman Williams?
I am comfortable if Councilwoman Castelino wants to make a recommendation this evening. I am very familiar with Mr. Rodolfo Rodriguez's experience and work. So if she would like to present him, I am more than happy to second that motion.
Thank you. Okay, I think we'll, we'll move.
I was going to second that, but I know Bill is new to us, so if Bill has any comments, then we can certainly hold it till next time.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. I certainly would like to at least get an idea of his background or resume. I don't know Mr. Rodriguez. I know who he is, but I don't know him well at all.
Fair enough.
That is fair. I certainly appreciate that. Thank you so much. So Councilwoman Castelino, at some point before the next meeting, if you can forward, that'd be great.
Yeah, you know, I could, I could send it over during the meeting if everybody wants to look at it. And by the time we get to conference agenda, that should give everybody plenty of time. So I'll just, if I give my report, I could, I could take a picture on my phone and send it to you.
Okay, that's fair. Thank you so, so much.
You're welcome.
And for the Environmental Commission consensus, I know that.
Interrupt one second?
Yes.
Okay, so on the conference agenda, we have council liaison appointments. So that would be the, a council member as a liaison to the Rent Leveling Board and to the Environmental Commission. And then the Rent Leveling Board consensus appointment of the council is listed under pending matters, new matters, council discussion, which can be voted on later tonight. But the, what we're discussing at this point are the actual council liaisons to the Rent Leveling Board and the Environmental Commission.
Thank you for that clarification. When I looked down at the Environmental Commission, I know we had a conversation earlier with respect to Councilwoman McCartney's interests in, in the Environmental Commission. I know that you are very much involved, Councilwoman McCartney, with the Environmental Commission and have been for quite some time. So that's why I got a little confused. And to the public apologies for the confusion, so we are talking about council liaison appointments to both the Rent Leveling Board and the Environmental Commission. And we will appoint the consensus appointment during New Business at the end of our conference.
Council President, let's start over. I would nominate you, Councilwoman Mathieu Brown, for the Rent Leveling Board. We have, have had that discussion already at previous meetings. So I make a motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Any, anyone else interested in?
Madam, Madam Council President, I am.
I see your hand raised. I am so proud.
Yeah, yeah, it was raised because as, as actual liaison for that commission, I certainly wanted to put myself forward as a member of the real estate profession for the past 18 years. I would like to suggest that I would, I would love to serve in that capacity.
I, so can I just interrupt one more time? So Councilman Rutherford's second in the nomination for Council President Mathieu Brown. So we can take a second nomination for Councilwoman Williams?
I will, I will nominate Councilwoman Williams.
Okay, and is there a second for that?
I second.
Okay, so let me just, I'm making my notes here. Okay, so I'm.
I'm confused. Now, what do we do, get out?
Well, no, we'll, we'll take a roll call vote. And then we will, it'll, you know, be based on whatever, however you vote. So I.
If I can interrupt for a point of order, I apologize, and I don't want to be unfair, but according to our documents, we are supposed to take those nominations in order. And so I understand that there was a second to the first nomination of Council President. So we actually procedurally are supposed to either vote her appointment up or down before we even consider me as the liaison, as a second nominee.
I was going to do a roll call vote on the nomination of Council President. And then, yes, you're welcome. Okay, so this is for the nomination of Council President Mathieu Brown as liaison to the Rent Leveling Board. I'm going to do a roll call vote. Councilwoman Castelino?
Wait, this is for?
Council President Mathieu Brown.
Okay, no.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Since I made the motion, I'm going to say yes, but I do want to say that, Tammy, it makes so much sense. This is just a previous discussion that we have had on the Rent Leveling Board. And I think one of the amendments that we're putting forward on these council liaison is, or for appointments are for a year, to serve for at least a year. So that could be another consideration.
So you voted yes?
I was voting yes for Cindy.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry, Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
No.
Council President Mathieu Brown?
No.
Okay, so there's. All right. Okay, so that motion failed. So now we'll do the motion for Councilwoman Williams as Rent Leveling Board liaison. Councilwoman Castelino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Unfortunately, no, sorry.
Councilman Rutherford?
No.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Mathieu Brown?
Yes.
Okay, so that motion is accepted. Okay, so now we have the Environmental Commission.
Do we have, as I was saying earlier, I know that Councilwoman McCartney is very involved with the Environmental Commission and is interested in serving as our liaison. And I would like to nominate Councilwoman McCartney.
And I'll second that nomination.
Okay.
Thank you, Tammy.
Councilwoman Castelino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Mathieu Brown?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is carried.
Thank you. If you didn't, I was going to hand over, the meeting is tomorrow evening, and I would hand over the agenda and everything that goes with it.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney, and thank you, Councilwoman Williams. I remember you mentioned that during the last council meeting about, you know, your knowledge in this arena. So happy to have your leadership in that position.
Thank you. Take over the sustainable jersey coordination also.
Thank you. So now we're moving on to council liaison appointments. I am going to start with Councilwoman Castelino, please.
Sure. Okay, so first, let me start with the Public Relations Commission, met last week. They have some new commissioners. We're very excited. Their group got started. They're working on a video focusing on more of like of a welcome for a welcome package to new residents. So we want to make sure that the new residents, you know, get all the information that's needed for them when they come into the town, steer them to the website, because on the website under Realtor, it, it, there's a bunch of information there with the welcome package, the tree ordinance, et cetera. So we're just trying to go over all the information, streamline it, and get up to date with all the technology. So they have a great project that they're working on. So it was a great meeting. Downtown Alliance also met last week. Another great meeting, very productive. Tonight, you have on for First Reading, ordinance 2638-21. Certain, parking time limited on certain streets. I think I said yes, in the, in the Lord's area. So what Ms. Brill, the director, has requested from conversing with many of our business owners is 15-minute parking. And we go talk about that later when we get to First Reading, why the need for it, and and that it will be enforced. So look forward to that conversation on First Reading. But the parking will enable folks to be able to park up in front of a few locations, run in a store, and, and run out with, and hopefully everyone will abide by it, more importantly. Also, they're bringing on some vendors, looking at an app for technology that was approved. So I look forward to Ms. Brill rolling that out soon. And also, we're looking, planning our downtown Thursday nights for the summer. And so looking forward to her report on that. In regards to the Board of Education, had a meeting with the school board on, our, our school board colleagues and the superintendent last Friday. And so I'm talking with Mr. Lepore. The baseball field will be getting replaced as we approved last year sometime very soon when the snow melts. So hopefully it'll be ready for March 27th. Mr. Lepore feels confident, as long as we don't get much more snow. And they'll be, they'll continue to work on the softball field over at Degnan Park. So that would be some spring projects. And although there wasn't discussed with them, but it also, Degnan Park too, that we approved. It's a lot of action over there, so we'll be having another meeting to coordinate all the traffic, especially because the high school will be opening up school next week or in a week or two. So there will be a lot of coordination and communication so that everything goes smoothly. Also, talking, Dr. Cascon assisted me today. Last night, we were having conversations about redevelopment and numbers, and I was able to get for my colleague some numbers for them. If you guys have a pen and paper, real quick, we have four students coming out of Edison Lofts. And when the demographic report was done on the, a few years back in 2017 with the school board, 70 students were predicted to come from the Lofts. And right now, there's four. Bel Air, there's about, one, two, three, four, five, about 10 streets that make up the development in Bel Air. Again, this was in, this is, you know, a different kind of complex, but originally 96 students were predicted to come out of Bel Air, and only 28 come out. And these are all students K through 12th grade, even added district placements. So only 28 students are coming out of the Bel Air development. Colonial Woods Drive, there's five students coming out of there. Now, that's the north. That's a new development, not Colonial Woods Drive itself. There's 29 altogether, five are just coming out of the new development. And I think there was, I don't have that with me. I couldn't find it in the one report. That was from an early report. I think there was 22 students predicted, if I was correct. And we never got a prediction for Harvard Press that I could find. Well, not that we, the, the school board and their paperwork that I was looking at. Harvard Press on 22 Central Avenue, there are 17 students that came out of that development. So just, and Viscaia, there's on Metzer Drive, that, of those condominiums, zero students. So just some numbers, some, you know, going, looking at back at predictions from these demographers. So when we have a discussion later tonight, I just wanted to share this information with you all. Okay? I hope it was helpful. And I want to thank the superintendent and the Angela from the, our registrar for helping me today with that. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Castelino. That certainly is helpful in advance of our conversation later this afternoon, this evening. Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes, thank you. So the planning board will meet next Wednesday, March 3rd, at 7:30. It will be a Zoom meeting. You can visit westorange.org to join that meeting if you're interested. I do want to thank Councilwoman Castelino about the idea for the new residence video. I think that's excellent idea. And thank you for the information on the number of students. The West Orange Arts Council, you know, their slogan is "Art heals what life deals", and they have been, since COVID started, just been actively engaging the community. And they're going to continue to do so. The Found Art Object True exhibit is until next Saturday. rave reviews there. They have the West Orange High School Annual Advanced Placement Studio Students Exhibit starting in March. Visit westorangearts.org if you would like to find out about that dates. There is a call for artists out now for Black Lives Matter, for justice, for equality, and for liberty. That is a virtual and in-person exhibit beginning June 5th. There'll be a light reception on Juneteenth. We're going to have poetry and art from the students and the residents. There is a Google form there to submit your work to be exhibited again at woarts.org. And the third Wednesday of every month, there is a creative connection, artist discussion and critique group, creative thinkers and artists get together. Again, lots of information at woarts.org. And on Saturday mornings, we have Bowie Tunes. That is cartoons with artist Ryan Convery at, at 10 o'clock. Again, very, information is on that website. And the West Orange Environmental Commission, I appreciate the nomination to continue to serve because we have quite a big, big agenda. Our meeting is tomorrow night, February 24th, at 7 o'clock. That will also be a Zoom. Information is on westorange.org/EnvironmentalCommission. We are looking into the Heritage Tree Program, championing our big trees and our old trees. You know, every year I register the township for Earth Hour. That is the last Saturday in March, a global event where people turn their lights out all over the world at 8:30 PM in their time zone. Even major structures like the Empire State Building and the Eiffel Tower. And they, if you go to earthhour.org, you can see what that looks like from satellite to see what, see the earth go dark, the effort to conserve energy and raise awareness. We have that panoramic view of that Eagle Rock, so you can watch the city lights dim for that one hour. And Stevens Institute, so I know I had mentioned that Stevens Institute, the students, we launched that on February 10th. The students are developing a sustainable management plan for the township. So those are, we have been having very exciting Zoom meetings about that. So there is a lot going on in the Environmental Commission. And we will have an Earth Hour event at the Thomas Edison National Historic Park. It's a perfect backdrop to have the students or residents talk about new initiatives and innovative ideas that the students are working on.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. Councilman Rutherford?
Thank you, Council President. I've attended all of the meetings for the Joint Committee of Essex and Union Counties. I have made our CFO and our mayor aware of some potential increased payments that may be coming down the road. For those that don't understand what that committee, commission does, it handles our wastewater. And so there is an issue. It was discussed in, in executive session. I don't know that it's appropriate for a public meeting, but I have made our, the administration aware that there may be some surprises coming down the road that we should be prepared for. Happy to report that for the Open Space Rec Committee, the work that is being planned at The Rock, which is at the top of Mount Pleasant Avenue, just as you come around the curve before you get to Liberty Middle School, I'm working with our Green West Orange to secure up to 1,000 trees, some of which will be reserved for that property, The Rock. So looking forward to having, hopefully this spring, some, some new plantings at The Rock, and excited about that. Those are the only two updates I have for my committees. Do want to make one more announcement. I am extremely proud of the Black Student Union at the high school. They put on a phenomenal vigil last night for all of the African-Americans that were killed at the hands of police. It was very well done. These are some thought leaders, very insightful, very compassionate, and excited about, not just, you know, pointing a finger at what some of the problems are, but also offering solutions. So to all of those young people that had a hand in putting that on, and to everyone that was there, I salute you. You did a great job last night. That concludes my report. Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Rutherford. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you so much, Council President. Since our last meeting on the 9th of February, the Historic Preservation Commission did have a meeting, and I am happy to report that there are continuous renovations at St. Mark's, St. Mark's Church. The Pleasantale Chateau Project is on hold. They were doing an addition to the garage and carriage house. There are current designations for historic preservation designations that have been tabled. And as far as program directives are concerned, they do plan to inform the public and to do tours of historic sites in our community. I would like to make note that our Downtown West Orange Alliance has featured a video on Anna Easter Brown and the marker that exist at the West Orange Public Library on Mount Pleasant. That is a marker that was erected in 2016, not only in honor of Black History Month, but also in honor of one of the original founders of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, who was born, raised, and educated, and graduated from West Orange Public Schools in 1905, who went on to further her education at Howard University, which is the founding institution of our first Black Greek sorority for women of color. And so I would like to acknowledge and, and make reference to that video being presented by the Downtown West Orange Alliance. In addition, the, myself will be sponsoring, hosting a Black History Month finale panel discussion with several community residents who have had a tremendous contribution to our community over the past several years. And those participants will be Marley Diaz, Dr. Janice Johnson Diaz, Dr. Joyce Harley, our first elected Black Councilman, Reynard Barnes, among several other residents. And we would like to invite residents to participate in that panel discussion on Sunday, March 28th at 7:00 PM. Information is on most of our social media websites. That completes my liaison reports for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I'm looking at the time. It is 7 o'clock. I will just say that the Municipal Alliance is hosting its meeting on March 2nd. They didn't have enough time to publicly notice the 22nd meeting, so they will be hosting their meeting on March 2nd. Information will be posted. That meeting is held at 3:00 PM. And as far as OSPECT is concerned, I'm happy to say that that will be given by, oh my God, I am so sorry that her name, Camille, just.
Camille De Lorenzo.
Camille De Lorenzo will be reporting in public comment. So look forward to that. That's it for me, and that closes our council liaison announcements at 7:01, when it passes the time. And we will move on now to our public meeting. Madam President? Madam? Madam Clerk?
Karen, you're muted.
Yes, thank you.
No problem. This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 30, 2020, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 10, 2020. Councilwoman Castelino?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Present.
Council President Mathieu Brown?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And Lauren, if we can open public comments at this time and remind everyone who is looking to speak to please raise their hand. Make sure to be reminded to state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. As the President said, it is time for public comments. So if you would like to speak, use the raise your hand function located at the bottom of your screen. And if you're one of our call-in attendees tonight, it's going to be star nine. For everyone, you do not have to wait for anyone else to stop talking to raise your hand. You will be put in a queue. And first, we have Joseph Fagan. If you can, please follow the prompt on your screen.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Joe Fagan, Public Information Officer. Good evening, Madam President, and greetings to all your council colleagues this evening. Tonight, I would just like to remind everyone about the program using the Shop West Orange Card. This is an economic development program which provides credit on property taxes, tax dollars as an incentive for residents to shop in town and use local merchants. You register the car, you, the card to your West Orange address, and when you shop at a participating business, a discount is applied towards your property taxes each time you use the, use the, each time you shop. The process is completely automated, and there is no need to save receipts or hand in any paperwork. Your tax credits will appear on your annual tax statement, and you can always track your savings online. The list of participating businesses is always expanding and includes a wide variety of goods and services ranging from restaurants to retail, including professional services such as legal, dental, and auto repairs. If you don't own property in town and only work or rent here, you can still participate and receive a rebate check as additional savings for shopping local at the end of the year. Multiple cards can be registered to a single household to co-incent Multiple cards can be registered to a single household to coincide with the number of shoppers in your family. So you can shop local, support your community, and reduce your tax bill at the same time. The card is free, and you can request one on our website at westorange.org by navigating to the Shop Local tab where more information about the program is also available. And finally, I just want to point out that yesterday, our West Orange Police Department marked 23 years online. So it was sort of an anniversary for them that kind of went unnoticed. I just want to point that out. That concludes my report. Madam President, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Ms. Camille Di Lorenzo. If you can follow the prompt on your screen.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, Council President and members of the council. Thank you for letting me speak tonight on behalf of Pleasant Valley Productions. Camille Vecchio Di Lorenzo, Pleasant Valley Productions, Warren Road. I am happy to report that Pleasant Valley Productions was able to provide outdoor entertainment safely and successfully last summer. We do plan to move forward with a very ambitious season for 2021. In 2020, following very strict COVID protocols, we produced with the help of some local sponsors and the Recreation Department, five concert events, including a very spectacular evening of Motown starring Jelani Remy from the Broadway musical, Ain't Too Proud, The Life and Times of the Temptations. That was probably, in terms of audience, our most successful of the events last summer, but they were all really great. People felt safe, and we gave them an opportunity to get out and see some live shows, which was excellent. What was really great was that we managed to keep all of the admission costs at $5. We have decided to open up OSPEC early this year so that we can host some local schools. The local high schools, including, and most importantly, West Orange High School, are still not able to use their auditoriums for performances. So this gives them a chance to have their shows, and that makes us happy to be part of that. After we host the high schools, we're excited to present an original musical for children called The Most Incredible Thing in May. Coming in June, we will present an evening of local bands. We're calling it Band and Brew. Also in June, we will collaborate with Interact Theater in Maplewood on a celebration of Pride Month with a play called This Is Our Story. We will then co-host a comedy under the stars with the Rec Department. That was very successful last year. We're going to end June with a back-by-popular demand concert called Broadway Under the Stars with the 20-piece orchestra. In July, it is our plan to present our main stage show, which we're excited to announce will be Smokey Joe's Cafe, which features 39 pop standards, including rhythm and blues hits like Poison Ivy, Kansas City, Woman, Love Potion Number Nine, Spanish Harlem Stand By Me, and a lot of other standards that we are all familiar with and excited to present. We will co-produce West Orange Idol with the Downtown West Orange Alliance in August. West Orange Idol is a singing competition event for West Orange residents only. In September, we are planning, this is something new, a DJ Dance Party event for our residents with special needs. And then we will close OSPEC with a concert presented by the Rec Department featuring the the B Street Band, which is a tribute to Bruce Springsteen. And we're super excited about it, not only very anxious for the community to come out and see some of these shows, breathe some fresh air, but we also really welcome everyone in the community to become involved. You know, be part of what makes it happen. It's a lot of fun. And volunteers are kind of our, the backbone, you know, in order for us to continue free and low-cost programming, we do rely on our volunteers, and we appreciate it. And I do want to report that last year, so we had the five concerts. I only have one minute left. Okay, so we had the five concerts, which were fantastic. But we also hosted a showcase of African dance and, oh, the drum corps from Montclair. That was fantastic. And we hosted a movie night for a school. So opening, in terms of our financials, opening last season, we came in with $2,342.50, and we closed out last season with $6,601.56. So obviously, everyone knows that your performing arts cannot survive on ticket sales, especially when they are $5 or free. So that $6,601 is a lot to do with some support from the community. So I would just like to say thank you.
Thank you, Camille, so very much for taking the time to report on OSPEC and all of its successes. And to my council colleagues, Camille will be sharing those reports via email for review. And if you have any questions, we can address it, you know, with Camille and the OSPEC, the Board of OSPEC. Just before we move on, I wanted to make mention that during the last public comment, there were some comments or questions with respect to not being able to see the number of participants who were on the Zoom. I am told by our moderator, Ms. Lauren, that if you come out of full screen, you can see the participants lists or the number up top of your screen. Lauren, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, that, that is true. It was a little tricky because I'm on another computer, and I'm like, I don't see it. But I came out of attendee at a full screen, and if you just look to the top left, it'll say how many panelists and how many attendees.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. I know that that was a concern that some members of the public raised during our last council meeting. And it was just a matter of not knowing that you couldn't see that. So our apologies, but that should be corrected.
We can The President, Council President, and just so, just to follow up on tonight's meeting right now, we have 14 panelists and 39 attendees.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Okay, Lauren, can we move to our next speaker, please?
Absolutely. Thank you. Next, we have Susan Lenzek. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hey, Susan Lenzek, 234 Eagle Rock Avenue. Good evening. I'm following up on the discussion at the last council meeting regarding a proposal to limit the time available for citizens to speak during public comment to three minutes. The reason given for this proposal is to make council meetings more efficient and effective. Many citizens spoke in opposition to this proposal. And although a couple of people indicated a willingness to find a middle ground, I don't recall any one citizen who spoke at the last meeting who fully supported it. In your response, some of you indicated that in reality, it would be a three-minute limit, but there would be the possibility of a speaker being granted up to five minutes. And you said that the way that would work is that at three minutes, a person would have to request additional time. The council president would be able to grant one minute more. At the end of that time, if more time is needed, the full council would have to vote to allow it. It was noted that it was likely that the speaker would, in fact, be granted the additional time requested. However, if this is an attempt to increase efficiency, it seems it would have the opposite effect and would result in reducing efficiency. The interruptions during a speaker's comments are inefficient. Instead of allowing a person five uninterrupted minutes, the total time taken by the speaker would be over five minutes because of the interruptions. Why could speakers not be permitted a smooth presentation if they are going to be given five minutes anyway? Over the years, I have listened to many a citizen with knowledge and expertise in many areas. Some have spoken eloquently and have contributed much to increasing understanding of many facets of issues and proposals. When they spoke, they spoke with authority, and they often needed uninterrupted time to fully explain their reasoning. I believe that it was necessary for both the council and the citizens to hear what they had to say. And furthermore, what they presented, based on their particular expertise or their research, became part of the public record, as it should have been. In the council's response at the last meeting, it was stated the council members are always accessible, and residents could contact you directly for further discussion, and you would respond. I know that that is true, and we all really sincerely appreciate your accessibility and your responsiveness. However, those personal communications do not become part of the public record. And I think that in many cases, the details of a person's comments ought to be part of that record. That is why it is necessary for citizens to have enough time to go into detail during public comments. And that may be difficult if restricted to three minutes or if interrupted a couple of times over a five-minute period. Now, Councilwoman Williams stated that she noticed that most people do take three minutes or less for their comments. So in summary, we have the following facts to consider. First, as just noted, many people may already be taking three minutes or less. Second, people will be given five minutes anyway if needed. Third, if to get those five minutes, a person will be interrupted twice, efficiency will be reduced, and the stated purpose of the proposal would not be achieved. Fourth, public comment does not occupy the alliance's share of the total time taken for council meetings. Fifth, public comment should be on the public record and not mainly in personal communications with council members. Sixth, the majority of citizens do not support a three-minute limit, and the council represents the citizens. The question then is, why is it necessary to change the current practice of permitting five uninterrupted minutes? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize. I've mispronounced your name, I think, a couple of times. I always get so nervous about that. Next, we have Hannah Monk. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, Hannah Monk, 14 Hoover Avenue. And I wanted to talk a bit about one of the ordinances on the agenda tonight regarding owning fowl here in West Orange. Not everyone may be familiar with my efforts to make owning fowl accessible to most, if not all, residents in West Orange. So I want to give a little background, but I thank you in advance for your support of these revised ordinances. So we had the opportunity to experience firsthand what it's like to have chickens this past summer, and it was a really amazing experience. I learned a lot with the process. They make very little noise. They have no smell, and they make very loyal, and they're very friendly pets. They provide fresh eggs every day. They're excellent weeters. Let them run around in the garden. And provide, they provide great fertilizer. The ordinance being voted on tonight provides fair guidelines to allow more residents of our town to own fowl. With the new ordinance in place, residents will be able to experience the joy of raising chickens in the suburbs while having adequate space for them to run without infringing on others' property or space. I urge each and every one of you to vote in favor of this new ordinance, which will only benefit the West Orange community. Thank you again so much for making this happen.
Thank you, Hannah.
Thank you. Next, we have Brent Scott. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Terrific. Good evening, Council President and members of the council. It's wonderful to see you all. I'm Brent Scott. I reside at 75 Nestro Road. I'll take a moment to discuss an issue that is sweeping our country, the issue of equity and social justice. The issue of equity and social justice is finally taking hold as part of our national conversation. On January 22nd, just one month ago, President Joe Biden, his first official act was to issue an executive order, and I quote, "to overturn systemic racism and longstanding inequities in our society." The New York Times calls it "an ambitious hole of government equity agenda" to advance racial and social justice for all, including historically underserved communities, such as people of color and individuals with disabilities. This council and our town government has the opportunity to join and embrace this reckoning of equity and social justice with local government policy. A few weeks ago, the Open Space and Recreation Commission took up the matter of equity and social justice regarding the Jenny Dunkle Swimming Pool. In a non-binding resolution, it is proposed that the council consider an additional entrance policy and/or additional pay structure for the Jenny Dunkle Swimming Pool. Specifically, the resolution requests enactment of a day pass or a free day or three hours for the Jenny Dunkle Swimming Pool. In this way, our lower-income residents would also have access to the pool, whose seasonal membership can be cost prohibitive. The Jenny Dunkle Swimming Pool is located dead center in a lower-income community. If I may quote a letter from a resident in the West Orange Chronicle, "Many of the residents where the pool is located cannot afford to take a swim there on a hot summer's day." I am the sponsor of this non-binding resolution. Before presenting it to the Open Space and Recreation Commission, I ran the idea by several of my neighbors and other West Orange residents. One of them said in excitement, "This is terrific. The new council president is all about equity." West Orange is a fiercely diverse community. Some of that diversity is income diversity. I've heard it referred to as the uphill downhill divide. The Equity in Public Amities Resolution is an opportunity for the West Orange Council and town government in a small way to bridge that divide just a little. Imagine for a moment how awful it would be for the public library or our playgrounds and tennis courts to be fenced off. No entry unless you can pay an entire season upfront for you and your family. How awful would it be for lower-income residents and their children if they couldn't access the library? Members of the council, two years ago, I spoke in favor of keeping the cost of the West Orange Shuttle to genuinely within the town budget and in opposition to a pay-per-ride fee. At that time, I stated, "The shuttle isn't free. We pay for it in our property taxes." Lower-income residents and renters may not pay property taxes directly, but they do pay property taxes indirectly. We have equity with regards to the Western Shuttle. We should have equity for total recreation access. The President of the United States is making equity a social justice top priority. For the first time in history, the American Civil Liberties Union, the ACOU, is changing its focus from free speech to achieving equity and social justice for all. West Orange, like all communities, has a wealth gap. Many have the means to afford a seasonal pass for the Jenny Dunkle Swimming Pool. Many others, unfortunately, do not. Dozens of New Jersey communities offer day passes to their residents, including the Townships of Edison, Westfield, Roway, Tinton Falls, Ringwood, Menville, all offer an affordable day pass. According to Patch.com, the swimming pool in Secaucus is free to all town residents, just that the shuttle in West Orange is free to all town residents. I implore this council to borrow the environmental movement's successful slogan, "Think globally, act locally." Take up the Equity and the Equal Access in Public Amities Resolution. This council, that I am so happy to see is now diverse. Bring those diverse voices to the fore and do this for the least among us in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Althea Tweaton. I apologize if I, if I have pronounced that incorrectly. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Al, 15 Edgar Road. I don't know if I can discuss this enough, but I'm going to try. I, I don't think it's inappropriate to at this time. I'm the president of the West Orange Javikin Heritage Organization, and we are sponsoring a Women's History Month celebration. It'll be at our general meeting on March 17, 2020 at 6:00. It's a Zoom, a Zoom meeting. And our guests will be, AKA Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority member, Dr. Cordy DiCosta, who will talk about breast cancer. We will have, what is it, Delta Sigma Theta Mildred Crump, who will discuss city government. She's also been a councilman, a councilwoman for Newark. And last, we will have Zeta Phi Beta Sorority member Kimberly Moore Jones, and she will discuss mental health. So we would like for you to join us. It's going to be a wonderful program. And again, it's on March 17th at 6:30. It'll be a Zoom meeting, and I will be back in touch with all the Zoom information. And you'll also see it on our website and our, and on our, and on our Facebook page. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Claire Silvestri. If you can follow the Okay, next, we have Claire Silvestri. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Sure, thank you. Good evening, Claire Silvestri, 20 Grandview Avenue. I spoke at length at last night's workshop meeting, but I'm here again urging you to defer decisions on all of the proposed legislation having to do with the executive drive and library redevelopment projects, until both the public and the majority of the council, who were not seated at the time these projects first came before the council, have time to fully digest and ask knowledgeable questions about many important aspects of the project that were covered only in broad terms last night. Aspects such as the jitney that is supposed to take seniors and residents from other parts of town to the new library. What is the approximate cost of that to taxpayers? It was asked and unanswered last night. Or the animal shelter. Will it be housed in 10 Rooney Circle across the hall from the library stacks or in a separate building? Mayor Parisi last night appeared to indicate that downtown redevelopment Phase Two, which requires moving of the public works and animal shelter facilities, is in some sort of limbo now that it's more than two years behind schedule. What's going on with that? And the most important question of all, does the redeveloper really need the 30-year tax abatement in the form of a pilot to make this project viable? Mayor Parisi last night talked about the insatiable and consistent demand of developers for pilots, while ignoring the fact that the adjacent Essex Green, whose new owners explicitly rejected a pilot for its huge investment. And is all the free stuff like a dog park really equal to the millions of dollars of unrealized future tax revenue the township will be giving up? Mr. Hanley, the town's financial advisor, spoke last night more than I'd ever heard him speak at a council meeting, but I didn't find him particularly convincing. He barely spoke on financial issues and stayed advocating on other subjects in unvarnished support of the project. His statements consistently contradicted those of an accomplished and highly respected planner who recently testified at the planning board hearing on the redevelopment. I must say as an aside, Council President, that I wish you had directed Mr. Hanley to stop interrupting Councilman Rutherford and only address the questions posed to him. The councilman, I thought, was doing a good job of representing the residents who have serious concerns about the need for pilots. And Mr. Hanley's apparent disrespect toward Councilman Rutherford was by extension disrespect to many residents. I also reiterate my concerns about the very short notice and nonexistent publicity for this workshop session. The administration gave us rationale and impending deadline for the state grant. But absent proof, I'm skeptical that for a project of such priority, this administration would allow an important deadline to spring on them at the last minute. With a cloud of such state heavyweights as Senator Cody and Assemblyman McKeon in the mayor's corner, I suspect extensions could be given so members of the public and newly elected council members would have adequate time to get up to speed, ask cogent questions, and make fully informed decisions. I'm sure you all realize that a very small number of residents were able to be on last night's session, and the video of the workshop will not even be available before you cast some very important votes. Also, the 30-plus slide presentation from last night is still not up on the town's homepage as of early this evening. I also find it stunning the council president went along with the administration and scheduled a meeting that one of its council members was not able to fully attend. After insisting at the last council meeting that these workshop meetings would give the public more access to information and a greater voice, the council president didn't make a point of ensuring that the public notice of this workshop meeting was widespread. Separately, I urge the council to vote no at introduction of ordinance 2637-21 to restrict public comment on second reading tonight. The changes made to that ordinance between its introduction on first reading and tonight are substantive, very substantive, and the process should start over again according to state law. I'll point out that the only indication the ordinance has been changed are the words "as amended" in bold on the meeting agenda's listing of the ordinance. There is no way for a reader of the amended version, which I reviewed on the website, to differentiate between the original proposed changes and the ones made subsequent to its introduction at the February 9 meeting. However, if you do go forward with this introduction tonight, I will speak later in opposition. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next, we have Joe Krokowiak. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Good evening. Joe Krokowiak, Grandview Avenue. Last night, council held a workshop on the Executive Drive Library Redevelopment Project. It was informational and helpful, and I thank the council, the mayor, and the administration officials for this extra effort on such an important issue to our town. At the workshop, I asked 11 numbered questions about the project. They were largely ignored. This is unfortunately not an unusual occurrence during public comment over the years for many residents, and I urge the council to do all that it can to answer residents' questions at the meeting. Respectfully, many people noticed this lack of transparency, and I believe better responsiveness to questions would serve constituents better and benefit your own credibility. Again, I'll ask some of the questions. Number one, what did the town council and administration do to provide transparency about the workshop meeting? I could find no social media or township email notice. Two, why is the decision on moving the animal shelter not made yet? What is going on with downtown redevelopment Phase Two? It requires moving the public works and animal shelter buildings. This project is more than two years behind schedule, and it appears there's no urgency for the move. What specifically is going on with Phase Two? Question three, the mayor said that this project can't get financing without a pilot, and that may be true. But what has been done by the administration to identify projects that can get financing without a pilot? Four, the proposed deal includes library RABs of about 100, excuse me, 1.5 million. RABs require the town to borrow the funds and use them for the project. Taxpayers aren't obligated to repay, but the pilot revenues are dedicated to repayment. Is it correct that the RABs are repaid from the pilot from funds that would otherwise go to the town as in a typical non-RAB pilot? Number five, how much will the jitney program cost and what are the source of funds? Six, schools will always get their tax levy, including during a redevelopment project and a pilot. But don't actual taxpayers make up for any shortfall from the pilot payment relative to what they would be paying if they were paying property taxes? I have two more questions. Question seven, Mayor Parisi said again last night the 10 Rooney Circle is worth $6 million to $8 million. The building is assessed this year at just under $2.6 million, less than half of its assessment last year. And just to note, that's the same percentage decline in the property's tax revenue. Assessment is supposed to equal market value. So which is it? Is the building worth $6.6 or $8 million, or is it worth $2.6 million? The council should clarify this multimillion dollar question, since the mayor has offered this building as a significant positive in the financial agreement. And just to note that I previously sent the state assessment record of the 10 Rooney Circle to the council. Question eight, when will the 30-plus slide presentation from the workshop be on the homepage of the town website? I urge council members to continue to dig into the deal and ask as many questions as you need to have a good understanding of this complex proposal. I also want to salute Ms. Hannah Monk for her amazing efforts with the fowl ordinance. You may not know it from her knowledgeable and articulate voice, but she is a West Orange High School student, and she has been working on this project for more than six months. So I also salute her perseverance. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Krokowiak.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Kathy Rooney. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record. And Kathy said no and lowered her hand. So not Kathy. Oh, and she re-raised her hand. Okay, Kathy, if you follow the prompt on your screen.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, good.
Okay, good. You can hear me. Sorry, I lost you there first.
No, it's okay. Just your name and address for the record, please.
It's Kathleen Rooney, and I'm on Kirk Street, right in the Lord's area.
Okay, you're all set.
Okay. First, I wanted to, I also would like to commend Hannah's efforts on the fowl ordinance, but I do have a few concerns about it. First, I mean, I think it's probably a great experience for some, but not all the neighbors in our town will be affected in the same manner. As you are aware, everybody's lots are different sizes. Mine, for instance, is a 40 by 80, and I can look at my window and see my neighbor's bathroom on one side. And my concern is that if I see it says up to one acre of land is allowed to have up to two chickens or roosters or fowl. Can you clarify this in the manner of, is there a limit per acre? What if you have under a half acre? And my other concern is, she indicated there's no smell, but what happens if they're not taken care of properly? I imagine that foul fecal would eventually smell and affect neighbors who are in close proximity. You know, you do also have issues where, again, property size lines and some properties face, for instance, Kelly Playground. Are these things going to be fenced in properly, or are they just coops, or do you have to have your entire property fenced in? You know, previously, we had fox issues already up by Kelly. Are these fowl going to bring out predators? And then you have smaller, again, smaller property issues up on Harrison Avenue. These people are on top of each other. And as I would call them farm animals, I can't imagine that that would not affect each property differently. What about in the summer, when you have a nice 90-degree weather? I imagine it would have to smell. And I do know that in the past, we did have this ordinance, or maybe it was a bigger lot, I'm not really sure, but we had where there was cockfights, there was issues with complaints where people who were not following the rules or the guidelines. And then in that manner, how are they going to be enforced? I imagine you're going to have more calls or complaints. Do we have enough manpower to go out and say, you know, issue violations or whatever may need to be done to take care of this? I know in my area, for instance, my backyard, literally, I can look right into my neighbor's barbecue. This would definitely affect my quality of living, where we already deal with noise and street parking issues. And I also recall years ago, there was a person up by Redwood School who had a pig, and it smelled. And they, quote unquote, took care of it, and it's still, the stench was tremendous on a hot summer day. So I just wanted to, you know, express my concerns with this, you know. And again, if you could clarify how it works, if you have less than a half an acre, will the guidelines be across the board for the entire town, you know, in terms of limit of how many you can have? Will the fence have to be put up? Will it be a closed-in top coop? There's a lot of things to consider before passing such an ordinance. And I think I'm done.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. Okay, next up, labeled on the Zoom, it's just Galaxy Tab A8. And I'm just going to assume that's not your name. So if you can follow the prompt on your screen, whoever this is, and give us your name and address for the record. Again, it's labeled as Galaxy Tab 8. So if you have raised your hand, you might see a prompt on your screen. Throw the prompt one more time for the person, Galaxy Tab A8. Okay, I will come back to this person. Next, we have Gary Van Wick. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Good evening, Gary Van Wick, Burnet Terrace.
Thank you.
I found the informational meeting last night very useful and very interesting. It seems to me that, you know, we have quite a lot of debate and contention in town when it comes to redevelopment and development issues. And I think that it would be helpful to have more forums for discussion of the options, the costs, and the benefits of various types of development that are going on around town. So I welcome that kind of informational presentation. I also welcome questions that are, you know, posed by members of the community because I think that helps us arrive at clarity and also to search out different options. In that spirit, I'd like to call for more of that. And in fact, I think a real estate development town hall would be a very useful thing to do. I'm aware that, you know, we've been discussing the executive drive options. We have the Rock Spring subdivision coming up quite soon in March. I think that many people would like to have an update on the Edison Development. We have the library redevelopment and issues related to that. How will the annex work? How will the annex be connected to the main library, which will now be at the executive drive? And then also, I see that West Village, the new apartment complex on Northfield, is moving ahead quite rapidly. So I think it would be great if we could have the mayor, the town council, and other experts, maybe planners, talk to us about where we are on these different developments, what the options are, and also consider, you know, their relevance and their status in relation to the West Orange Master Plan for Development. Because we have so many things coming down the track at us that I think we also, you know, want to take a couple steps back and look at the broader picture of what the development means in terms of the master plan. I would like to just touch briefly also on the issue of, you know, raising poultry. I have some friends who actually live in Brooklyn and keep fowl and have eggs and, you know, all of that. And their Brooklyn neighbors live on pretty small properties, and they're quite happy to have poultry next door. Out here, I'm very conscious that we have a lot of foxes and raccoons, both of which predate on poultry. And I think that keeping domestic fowl should not in any way endanger or threaten the natural wildlife, that is, the foxes and raccoons. So if people are going to keep fowl, I think we should not entertain any complaints about raccoons and foxes who are hereby right long before fall. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you. And I'm going to try one more time to see if the person who is listed as Galaxy Tab A8, if you can follow the prompt on your screen. Oh, there you, hi.
Hi, how are you? So I'm not sure why I'm showing up as Galaxy Tab A8. Check that out. This is Joyce Harley calling, and I'm calling to make-
Joyce, I'm sorry, before you go, could you just give us your address really quick for the record, please?
513 Smith Manor Boulevard. And I'm calling for two points. One is to express joy that the HRC ordinance has been tabled until it can be properly amended to make sure it represents the interests of our citizens, and I hope the tabling is still in effect. Secondly, with respect to concerns of our citizens, one of the areas that came up front and center was the concern about sexual harassment and the concern that perhaps we as commissioners didn't take it as seriously as we take acts of discrimination. And a couple of people felt that that was highlighted and underscored by their belief that we had somehow, some way, supported a former candidate who'd been alleged to have engaged in sexual harassment during- during Black History Month presentations. They saw that we posted an activity where he was named as a moderator or sponsor, and they felt that somehow we were supporting him. And I want to set the record straight. The commission reported on every single activity by every single organization that it knew about that was sponsoring a Black History Month activity. That activity in which this person was sponsored or listed as the moderator was the activity of a community-based organization here in West Orange. So I have shared with the people that complained, and I hope that people will know that that is not an HRC-sponsored event. And if they have concerns, then they should address them to the organization that sponsored the candidate, the former candidate, who was alleged to have engaged in sexual harassment. And we are seriously committed to making sure that sexual harassment allegations are treated as seriously as are any other kind of discriminatory or non-inclusive and non-equitable activity. So thank you for the opportunity to set the record straight.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Mike West. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Sure, my name is Michael Westwood. I live at six zero eight Eagle Rock Avenue. And I just had a couple of questions. I'm disabled, and I'm not able to get around much. With the town hall being closed, I haven't been able to get down to ask. I was wondering about the property across the street from me, formerly known as the Atrium Restaurant, six oh nine Eagle Rock Avenue. And I was just wondering what's going on there, and are there any prospects or what's happening? Also, with the, up the street, the old China Gourmet Restaurant. What's happening with that, and what's going on? And I have a concern there, which I'm not sure this is the best place to say it, but I try to walk as much as I can, get out, and that area is now, it hasn't been shoveled or plowed since the first snow, and there's like eighteen inches of snow there. And there's no way to get through except going out in the street. And I'm afraid I'm eventually going to get hit by a car or a bus. And I was wondering if somebody could address that. And that's about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Sally Malanga. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Sally Malanga, fifty-seven Ridge Road. I wanted to comment on this ordinance regarding the keeping of chickens by homeowners. You know, this kind of slipped past me, but I have heard this young lady, Hannah Monk, speak up a couple of times, and I understand you're trying to accommodate her. But I'm really concerned about allowing people to keep farm animals on their properties. I think that it is going to add another level of conflict and dispute between neighbors, because I can guarantee you that only some people will want to do it, and other people will loudly object. And if people bring in chickens to their properties and decide it's not working, or they can't take care of them properly, it becomes a neighborhood issue, and it becomes a humane issue. Sometimes people have enough trouble taking care of their own dogs and cats. I really hate to add another level of animal care to our community, enforcement issues, sanitation issues. And while I understand that the teenagers, the young people, would like to try to do this, I just don't think that this is appropriate. Perhaps it's something they could ask to do at their school, where it can be managed and controlled and looked after, but to just allow it all over town, I think it's going to be a very contentious policy. So that's all I had to comment on tonight, and I hope you will reconsider this ordinance and find a more appropriate solution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Madam President, if you're able to look at the message that I sent, yeah, it just has to do with public comment.
Okay, unfortunately, if someone has spoken before, we do not allow for a second public comment. In this regard, however, I will say that because this is an ordinance, we will be discussing it later, and there'll be an opportunity, well, it is on first reading, correct, Madam Clerk? So there is no public comment during first reading?
That is correct.
Okay. Unfortunately, because we only have one speaker, give the opportunity for public comment to speak once during public comment. If they've re-raised their hand, then they cannot speak again.
Okay, thank you. So just a note for the attendee who is re-raising their hand, thank you. Before we get to Mr. Puglisi, if we have any other attendees that would like to speak during public comment, you can use the raise your hand button. This will be the last call for that. And if there aren't any, then I'm going to head over to Mr. Puglisi. Hi, yes, okay, so next, the Zoom person is just listed as B, the letter B, capital B. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Betsy Valdez, and I live on Elm Street. Thank you. All right, so I'll try to be as brief as I can. But basically, I want to comment on shortening the time for public comments and just basically say that the residents of this town deserve the full uninterrupted five minutes to speak without having to beg for a minute more for permission to speak and having that only be granted by, you know, only at the discretion of council members. Like one of my fellow residents so eloquently stated at the beginning of this meeting, you know, this process of granting minutes will do the opposite of the proposed intent of efficiency. I'm also tired of hearing that the intent isn't to silence the public or that the intent isn't to not be fully transparent. But those are words, and your actions speak volumes. Your actions do not match your supposed intent. You're suppressing the public's ability to voice their concerns by shortening the amount of time that they have available to them. You're not being fully transparent when you rush a meeting without posting it widely or in a timely manner, and also not posting the dizzying presentation that was-
Tim, sorry, we actually have lost you. I'm going to pause it.
Okay, I'll sleep.
Oh, three forty-one, okay. Let me just put that back to where it was. When we lost her. Oh, Lord. I'll put that back in one moment. I just want to see if we can get, we can get her back.
Hello?
Oh, there you are. Okay, let me just reset your time to where it was. We had lost you there for a second.
Sure.
Okay, you're all set.
I'm not really sure where I left off, but I'm just, I'll just restate my last couple of sentences. You know, I'm just tired of hearing that the intent isn't to silence the public and that it isn't the intent to not be fully transparent. But those are just words, and your actions speak volumes. Your actions do not match your supposed intent. You're suppressing the public's ability to voice their concerns by shortening the amount of time available to them. You're not being fully transparent when you rush a meeting without posting it widely or in a timely manner, and also not posting the dizzying presentation that was fed through last night. There were a lot of laughs last night, but no substantive responses to the concerns raised by our residents. There was one response that was a bit puzzling, a response about the library parking currently not being enough, but the parking instead in this proposal would be enough for an apartment complex. There was also another response about the traffic not being an issue. But how is that true when during the holidays or winter storms, the traffic at ShopRite is problematic? This project could triple the traffic in that area. How is it that, how isn't that not a problem? And, you know, I'd like to know if there have been any traffic studies with regard to this proposal. And just generally, there really should be more meetings about this, about the executive drive project. And I really hope that there are more in the future. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, and next, we have Cheryl Monk. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Monk, and my address is fourteen Hoover Avenue. And I just want, thank you. I just wanted to address a few things about the chickens. And one thing is that there are already property maintenance ordinances that would take effect if someone didn't properly care for chickens. And the other thing is that the property or that the ordinance, as it's proposed now, is only allowing for two. And it could also be, if there were concerns about noise, it could be amended to say hens only, so that you would not have a noise issue. The other thing is that people are actually doing this in town already, so that if it, even though the ordinances don't allow for it, so that if the ordinance were to be changed and allow other people to do it. My point is that if there were a problem, the town would have heard of it already, and there would be frequent complaints, and that doesn't, I don't imagine that's the case at the moment. So anyway, I just wanted to raise those points, and I hope you will consider this. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have someone who's listed just as Galaxy Note Nine, which is different than the tab. If you can follow the prompt and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Mel Julie Valdez from Elm Street.
Thank you.
So good evening, Town Council. I am urging you to please reconsider voting on the executive drive redevelopment project. I was one of the few residents that was lucky enough to attend yesterday's workshop, which was not widely publicized. There was a lack of notice, and although, you know, the township, the council president, Matute Brown, last night, late at night, posted something on the West Orange 401 group. It wasn't widely publicized on the website. It was very hard to find. And I just urge you to please revise the website, so it is more user-friendly, so it's easier to find this information, and also make a social media post, so residents are able to attend these workshops. Because what's the point of having these workshops if people aren't able to attend and actually voice their opinion and provide public comment? I also suggest that the town council provide more workshops with adequate notice. And I even agree with one of the commenters who suggested a town hall to discuss this redevelopment project. You know, this is going to affect many of our residents here, and I think that we need to be more informed. Yesterday's presentation by Mayor Parisi, I was trying to follow it, and there were so many moving parts. This is a very complex project, and I believe that the residents should be well-informed, so then they can also ask the questions that need to be asked and also provide their opinion. You know, it just seems that, you know, things are being rushed through, because now there's this deadline, the March first deadline regarding the library funding. I just think that, you know, you probably had advance notice of this deadline, so why are we rushing through things now? It just seems very, very dishonest. Second, I oppose the limiting of public comment, because I think that residents should be able to voice their concerns and questions. Many of the council members speak beyond five minutes, trying to defend their positions, but have no issue in limiting our time limit. You know, it seems very ironic. That does not seem balanced or allow for transparency. It shows that, you know, you don't really want to listen, and you don't really want to take our opinions into account. Yes, you say that we can email you, and that's fine and all, but I would like to be able to make a public comment, because as someone else suggested, it is part of the public record. Other residents can listen to what I said and play the videos, and there is a public record of it, whereas an email is not public record. Third, I would like to see, you know, more respect and decorum during these meetings and workshops, because, you know, I was interrupted yesterday, and also, I did see Mr. Hanley interrupt Councilman Rutherford numerous times, and I found that to be very frustrating, because I thought that Councilman Rutherford was making good points and asking good questions. But if you're interrupting the person when they're trying to make a point, then their point is lost. And fourth, you know, I would just suggest that the township, you know, and the council work on providing more workshops and just making everything more accessible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and last, but definitely not least, we have Mr. Puglisi. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Hi, this is Anthony Puglisi, representing County Executive Jody Vincenzo. I'll just be very brief. I just want to recap what we've done with our COVID program over the last couple of weeks. One, our food distribution program will start up again on Thursday. We'll be at Bloomfield Public Library after being snowed out for the last three weeks. We currently continue offering free testing for all Essex County residents, Tuesday at the Hall of Records Complex in Newark, Thursday at our Public Works Complex in Cedar Grove, and Saturday at the South Mountain Recreation Complex Turtleback Zoo in West Orange. Finally, we did experience our first delay in providing the COVID vaccines because of a national delay that was caused by the weather. We did receive our allotment for last week and this week, so we were back on track. And I can report that, and this is just for the sites that Essex County is overseeing. So these figures do not include anyone who was vaccinated at a pharmacy, their doctor's office, or the state sites or any other site that's not an Essex County site. We vaccinated seven thousand West Orange residents. Just about five thousand have gotten their first shots, and two thousand have gotten their second shots. That's all I have for you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We actually had someone raise their hand while Mr. Puglisi was talking. So I'm going to just make a final call. If anyone would like to speak, please use the raise your hand function now. So we have Joyce, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, good evening, Council. I just want to make two quick points.
Joyce, I'm sorry, we just need your name and address for the record.
Ms. Rudin, Woodland Avenue.
Thank you.
Two quick points. I was able to attend much of the meeting last night about executive drive, and like everybody else who has commented so far, I only found out about it about ten minutes before it started. It was not widely publicized. This was intended to be a teach-in, basically, for the residents, not for the council again, but for the residents to get up to speed with this issue. The mayor stated that there is no way that this project could go forward without a pilot. I just want to call your attention to the fact that we are a half hour from New York City. Our real estate market is popping. Everything is going for well-over-asking price. It is very hard to find property in West Orange. This is a very desirable area. And the executive drive location is prime property. Why do we need to hand out a thirty-year tax abatement worth millions and millions of dollars in such a desirable location? Secondly, the move to shorten public comment is really shocking, I must say. We're all in a democracy. This is, I realize that so many of you, all of you, are available to speak to us privately at a time when it is not during the council meeting. But this is going on record, and I think it is very important that you maintain the five minutes. Not everybody takes them, and just leave it the way it is. Thank you so much, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I see no other hands raised. Until I, and we have another hand raised. Kevin Malanga, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Thank you, Lauren. Good evening.
Sure.
Council President Kevin Malanga, fifty-seven Ridge Road, members of the council. Good evening.
Good evening.
I oppose to the raising of chickens in residential backyards on animal welfare reasons. I oppose to the raising of chickens in residential backyards on animal welfare reasons. I'm concerned about the amount of space that they would be permitted within the chicken coop. I'm concerned about the amount of daylight that they would be permitted. It's necessary for chickens to be able to roam and scratch the ground and lead a happy and healthy life. And they're not pets that can be kept in a crate all day long and that they need to be moving about in order for them to live properly. I don't think that this is going to be easily addressed by an ordinance permitting even only two chickens. So I, unless the animal welfare aspect of this situation is addressed, the ordinance should not move forward. I'm also opposed to the shortening of public comment. It seems that it's a solution in search of a problem. It has never been an issue in terms of verbose, public comment at any meeting that I've ever attended. In fact, some of the most profound public comment has been certainly under five minutes. We heard Ms. Sebastian speak for four minutes and 50 seconds. And it was a flawless public comment, not a word wasted. That would have been regretfully shortened to only three minutes under the new ordinance. So I thank you for your time. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Malanga.
Hey, thank you. And once again, I'm making my final, final call for public comment. And there are no other hands raised.
Thank you very much, um, Lauren, for assisting in that public comments moderation and to the public for all of your, um, time and, um, thoughts and considerations shared with the council. I, I do want to say, um, that we will be discussing, um, the ordinance for the, um, chickens raisings. So I'll discuss any response at that time, um, as well as the executive drive. That will be discussed also, um, as it is on our agenda. So I would, um, I would, I will wait to address, um, those two particular items so that, um, we can have council discussion on them. But certainly appreciate all of the advocacy, um, each one of you has, uh, shared with us. I do, I do want to, because I did address last night in a late, um, co- public post of my council page. That this was not, um, in my eyes, something that was planned to be held or kept in secret or not informed of the public. I was very honest in saying that I have been off social media this week because sometimes from time to time, we need a break and that was my, um, time to do that. There is, uh, there is documentation that was forwarded to me, uh, from our, um, administration that came from the state's librarian. Indicating the March first deadline. So while I, I understand how some of you may think that that is an excuse. That there is something more nefarious that is going on as to the rush for the March first date. I beg to differ because that is simply not the case. When we discussed a couple of dates during the last town council meeting, it was, there were two dates that were given. One was preferred simply because, um, our moderator, Ms. Lauren, was not available. And the, uh, administration agreed to those dates, um, March first specifically. But before it was noticed, that's when Dave Cubey, our executive director from the library received this email. And that was forwarded to us, um, along with that information. So now the, um, we did not have that date in advance. Um, that was the date that we were given. So, um, I, I have to just clear the record, um, that that wasn't something that was done just because we wanted to, um, to do something in secret or keep it from the public. As a matter of fact, the reason that I have recommended these workshops is because as a new council member, there were times that things were just presented on the agenda and we had the time within the confines of a council meeting to address those items and then take a vote on those items. I was hopeful and I was very grateful that our, my council colleagues, as well as the administration, agreed that these meetings would benefit us for a workshop to ask questions, to process, to digest. And then also provide an additional opportunity for the public to comment on. So that's what that was held for. I know that one of the public commenters, Mr. Van Wick, um, suggested, um, additional meetings. And that is something that, uh, we have also discussed. I do want to remind the public that, particularly with Executive Drive, I know that even before I ran for town council, there were public, uh, meetings. I recall several public meetings for Executive Drive that I attended. One specifically was at the high school, um, large turnout there. There was a lot of Q and A. There were suggestions from the public that were taken into consideration, um, and things that were changed. So I, I, I understand what, what, what your concerns are about what this seems like. You know, and, and have to say that we have had in, in the last several years, plenty of meetings. And again, that was before I was even, you know, thinking about running for, for public office, um, and attended those meetings. But I certainly do look forward to our council, um, being able to continue to have these workshops on these matters, um, that are important to all of us. Um, and share out with the public. But just wanted to be clear on the fact that there is nothing to hide in, in the fact that this was not publicized largely. It was on the township website. That's how others have found the meeting. Um, and it is true that most of the times I do create on my, uh, political page, um, an announcement. But I was off of social media until Sunday night and just did not, um, have the opportunity to do so. Um, two, I believe it was Ms. Valdez who felt interrupted during the last public comment. I apologize. I did interrupt because I noticed that when you started to speak, the time was already ahead by 15 seconds. And I wanted to make sure that we reset the time, um, accordingly. So apologies for that interruption. It is never my intent to, um, interrupt any of our, uh, public commenters. Um, with respect to, um, the HRC and that ordinance has, um, been tabled, as I stated before. The ordinance was tabled because of a discussion that I had, um, with the, um, mayor and his willingness and ability to have a discussion with the HRC commissioners to, um, find a resolution that will make everyone, um, more effective, unified, um, in their efforts. And I also, while we're on the topic, um, want to clarify some, uh, comment that was made by one of my council colleagues during the last council meeting, where it was indicated that the HRC did not have any meetings to discuss any HRC changes, um, to their ordinance. And following that meeting, we did receive, um, documentation from a commissioner where it does in fact indicate that there were meetings, where this was discussed. It was on the agenda. It was on a timeline. So I just want to ensure, um, that they understand that I received that, I understood that, and I appreciate, um, their documentation of those discussions. Um, I think, Mr. Gross, if, if you're able to answer the question with respect, I don't know if you have that information. But the question with respect to the Eagle Rock, um, property, the atrium and China Gourmet, do we have any information on that, Mr. Gross? Or Mr. Trank as to what's, what are, what's happening with those properties?
I, I do not have any specific information that I can report, but we certainly will look into it and, and get back to, uh, everyone as to find out. Additionally, we will, uh, have someone go out and take a look tomorrow at the snow conditions to make sure that people can travel back and forth, uh, in, in a safe manner there in that area.
Council President, I can report, uh, on the atrium property. I believe that an application has been made. I'm not sure if it was the planning board or the zoning board, but I believe an application is now pending, uh, for a long-term, um, uh, continuum of care, uh, facility on the atrium site.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Westwood, I, I hope that that answers at least part of your question. And, and there is a resolution to the concern of the snow, um, that will be taken care of by the administration. So I certainly, um, hope that that was of assistance. Mr. Scott, Brent Scott, thank you for your efforts and your comments. Certainly look forward to that discussion. I'm not very clear on whether or not the environment, I'm sorry, the Open Space and Recreation Commission. And I'll let, uh, Councilman Rutherford address that further because that's his commission. So I will stop there except to say thank you for your efforts in bringing that to our attention. Um, I think that's where I will stop. I already thanked, um, Camille, um, for all of your hard work with all your volunteers at OSPAC. Joe Fagan, thank you. And also a special thanks to, um, Mr. Puglisi. Any of my council colleagues want to, uh, respond to comments?
Sure.
Councilwoman Castelino.
Sure, I'll go first. Um, okay, a lot to unpack this evening. Thank you, everyone, for coming down and, um, bring a lot of great stuff to us, some great points. I'll, I'll start with the, uh, Mr. Scott's comments. Um, um, this discussion has come up before in the past. I don't know what my colleague, um, hopefully our colleague will have, Ms., colleague, uh, Rutherford, Councilman Rutherford will have something more to offer. But, um, there's a few things with the pool. First, it's a user fee. The fees I know may not be affordable to all, but they're, um, in comparison to other townships, they're, they're very reasonable priced. Mr. Keo, and it, uh, does a great job every year scheduling our school district. So every child has an opportunity. Except for last year, of course, with COVID, um, to, uh, attend the township pool with various activities through the schools, through the community house. There's a sports and games night that's free to the community. So there's various, uh, multiple community events that are, uh, open to everyone in the township throughout the year. Membership, you know, don't forget, um, you know, this is funded primarily, um, not only just through our ta- through the, uh, taxpayers, but also from the members, the users themselves. So if the users do not pay, then we're going to have to supplement. I believe Mr. Gross could talk, uh, you know, to whatever that amount is, a couple hundred thousand dollars maybe. I don't know what the, you know, what the whole total is, but he could, he knows the numbers and something we could discuss at budget time. But to also, if you open up to the whole town too, I mean, they'll have to figure out a way because obviously you have to accommodate. Uh, you have to have a number of lifeguards on, uh, staff working. So I would assume it would have to be limited because the pool only has so much of a capacity as well. So I think it's around 600 people, I believe. Anyway, something to discuss, um, but again, it's a, it's a fee that would come, you know, that would affect the budget. If it's something we decided to, to move forward with. In regards to the chickens, Hannah, thank you so much for coming down again, uh, to, or coming on the air to speak and, and good to hear from your mom. Uh, and I know you've been very patient with this. Um, you had presented to me, uh, numerous times last year. And, um, I, I, you know, I apologize again, um, but, um, I, I just, I'm just not supportive of the initiative. Mainly because we had issues in the community 12, 15, 20 years ago. A lot of issues where, um, I think one of the residents, uh, mentioned that this evening, um, there, the smell, uh, chickens getting loose. If, if folks don't have smaller properties and two acres and they do have, uh, the fowl on them now, that is in violation of, of an ordinance. But if it's not bothering the immediate neighbor, that's probably why they're not saying anything. But it's also resources on, uh, a very stressed, uh, property maintenance department that we are down, a property maintenance officer that we haven't replaced yet. So as far as enforcement, I have a multiple questions for administration tonight. You know, on how they would enforce this. Um, does it only, uh, and it, does it only, uh, it, it speaks to all farm animals, not just the fowl. They put a limit on two fowls. A lot of questions and, um, you know, we'll, I'll save that for discussion, uh, when we get to the ordinance. But thank you and I appreciate your advocacy and admire it, your spirit, but, um, I have a real hard time with this one. I live on a quarter acre lot. Um, you know, the summer months are tough, um, when, um, you know, there are people who don't take out their garbage. So, you know, unfortunately, we do have a lot of people that don't take care of, as Sally mentioned, uh, you know, their, their other pets. I, I, you know, and we've had, had this experience, um, even years ago, they had problems with, uh, where they have the birds fight, the cockfights. It's, it's like crazy sometimes with, um, with folks, but, um, and it's a shame because there are probably many people that would, uh, really take care of them and do the right thing. But when we create an ordinance, it's, it's for everyone and we have to go by some of our history. And our health department wasn't supportive last time I spoke with them on this because of all the issues in the past. But we'll, we'll continue that conversation, uh, tonight. Um, let's see here, redevelopment. So again, we had, uh, you know, I think the council president's taken a hit for this. Thank you. That I, I don't think is fair. These meetings aren't easy to schedule. We have to schedule professionals. So again, you know, this with the transparency, I'm really disappointed with some of the comments tonight. Uh, you know, I, I, I appreciate your frustration. Um, I hadn't changed plans to accommodate my schedule. You know, that's life. Sometimes things happen. We're trying to do a lot of, uh, great things for the community. And, uh, sometimes there are scheduling conflicts and, and, and we're time restricted. But, you know, if you saw the mayor's presentation, many of you will, because the mayor did state that he will have in, within next couple of days, his presentation on there with the, uh, with, uh, answer and, uh, questions and, and answers for them. Very detail oriented to give a great presentation last night. Um, but this has been going on since 2017. So we've had multiple meetings about this. Uh, the plan is very similar to what it was. Uh, we just don't give out a pilot. And again, uh, you'll see on the presentation, for those of you that are watching this evening. You know, this is a real estate tool. Verona, there's, there's a, a new apartment building, not just the flag company that they redeveloped, but closer to, um, to Verona Park apartment building. Both pilots, Roseland, the Becker Farm, uh, road, uh, pilot, uh, up and down Livingston Route 10, Bloomfield, Hackensack, Teaneck, Montclair. The pilots is not a tax abatement. It is payment in lieu of taxes. So we, there's a schedule, Mr. Hanley here, our finance, uh, uh, person expert is here tonight. Um, uh, you know, I, it's hard, Zoom meetings are hard. So I'm not sure, you know, I, I'd like to hear from Councilman Rutherford if he felt he was being interrupted. But the, the Zoom meetings are tough and it's a lot of information to absorb. It's so much easier. I miss the days when we could go back to a meeting room and have discussions with each other. It, it's just so much easier, so much better. Um, and you can understand each other's face. I'm speaking now and I only see Mr. Gross and Council President and, and no one else. So it, it's hard. These Zoom meetings are tough. So I think everybody, you know, I, I appreciate your, your frustrations. But at the same time, everybody's working really hard here to try to do the right thing by this community. People, yeah, I mean, developers come in, I'm in the real estate mar- uh, business, so, um, privy to a lot of this. I understand it. So I, I try to, I apologize if I sound frustrated. But we're all trying to do what's best for our community and give our community, um, some, some great amenities and some great services. And, um, we all work really hard. So sometimes the, the, the accusations now are really disappointing and I'm just going to keep it at that. But, uh, thank you, Althea Tweetin. Uh, you do a great job with your, uh, with the, your organization and, and for keeping our seniors. Uh, doing a lot of work for them through this pandemic. Um, thank you so much, Joe Fagan. Camille DiLorenzo, what great summer programming last year. Um, social distancing, people felt safe. And I anticipate a great season this year because unfortunately folks were still in this pandemic. That, you know, it's still hard to, to see each other. And I, I, I think OSPAC is going to be such a great opportunity for so many that have been stuck in all winter. And, uh, and we try to offer free programming to the community. And if you can donate, uh, please do so by, uh, going to www.pleasantvalleyproductions.org. Because the, the productions have been unbelievable. Our talented residents have been volunteering their time. because the productions have been unbelievable. Our talented residents have been volunteering their time. And it's just great, great community experience. And that's what we try to do here. We try to give you great community experiences. I'm sorry, sometimes if we talk too much, but sometimes there's some misinformation that's also put out there and we do try to re-explain it. I'm not saying it's purposely given, but sometimes there's a lot of, lot of moving parts to it. And I look forward to the redevelopment conversation later. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Castelino. Councilwoman McCartney.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just could down the list on my notes. I wanted to thank Joe Fagan for reigniting the shop local campaign for residents. I think it just, it needed that boost again to let people know that there is a way to shop local and save on their property taxes. I have to reiterate what Councilwoman Castelino just said about Ospac and Camille's presentation. It's just so diverse and dynamic and I look forward to another great season. Even during the pandemic, we still had a great time all season. And inviting the students in, I think that's a great idea. A few residents like Susan Lesnick and others talking about this time limit, the rules of council. I came away, I guess we're going to talk about this with the ordinance, but I just wanted to say here that I can't, when I mentioned at our last council meeting about saying three minutes, but we can go to five, I didn't mean that the council should start debating on if we should do that. So I think that will take even more time. I came away with the same conclusion that that is just not going to be an efficient use of time. And we just leave it at five if we're going to allow it anyway. And I guess the chickens, you know, this is, Hannah, I appreciate Hannah. She has shared so much with us with this chicken ordinance. But unfortunately, what is being presented to us tonight does not reflect anything that other municipalities have on their books. This doesn't, well, it doesn't specify hens just to produce the eggs. It doesn't mention that roosters are not permitted. It, you know, that we need fencing, we need to determine structures and they're just, I'm looking at, well, I just happened to have Maplewood ordinance here in front of me talks about cleanliness, even having neighbor consent. I appreciate Kathy Rooney, you know, talking about trying to find a way that could satisfy the neighbors and the residents that do want to keep chickens because we do know that residents already do have chickens. And I really, that has never come up as a complaint, but I do believe that there has to be more in our ordinance to regulate keeping chickens. I was surprised to hear from Sally and Kevin Malanga. I know what animal lovers they are. And I believe that it would, it would be the same idea that until we can regulate this in a better way, you know, what is being presented to us this evening is not it. Althea, again with the West Orange African Heritage Group, thank you for the invitation to attend. And Claire and Joe, again, they spoke last night. I don't think we'll ever agree on so many things. I'm sorry that Joe felt that his questions had not been answered because I believe that they were according to the checklist that I made in the notes that we had last night. One of the things, and I guess this is for our municipal clerk, that I would ask, would it be possible, and we've heard from other residents too, would it be possible to add tap info, West Orange, to your outreach on, since everyone, even from kindergarten on up, is on online these days, would it be possible to put the notices in tap as well as the Chronicle and the Star Ledger? Don't know if that's an ordinance amendment or something that we, I would recommend that we do that since people are reading the news. And is it possible to add the agenda to the Zoom link so that people can just have everything at their fingertips instead of having to search around the website to find the information?
Can I answer that?
Sure.
As far as the notices, the notices for the 48 hour notice does not get published. It gets sent to the two official newspapers of the township as required by law. But it's not necessarily published. One of the newspapers that we use is the Chronicle. And they have a specific deadline, which is, I believe, Friday at 5:00 PM. It's published the following Thursday. So there's no way we would have met that criteria with this particular meeting. We would have had to postpone this meeting in order to meet that if you wanted the actual notice published in the newspaper, which is not a requirement. It is only required to send it to those two newspapers. You know, I do publish the council meeting agenda at the beginning of the year, all the meeting dates for the year, as do other boards such as the zoning and planning boards. We do put those dates out. We do make sure that they get on the website. This particular notice was put on the website Friday afternoon with the Zoom instructions on the main page under news and announcements.
Yes.
So, you know, we did make that effort. As far as Cap is concerned, I certainly can, you know, reach out to them and and figure out a way to get it out there. As far as the social media at this particular time, I just believe it was an oversight, you know, it's, everything happened very quickly and you know, I personally don't post on Facebook. And I don't participate in other pages on Facebook. So, you know, so that's where that stands. I just think that basically this was an oversight.
Thank you. I understand that. I'm just thinking that we should put it in tap too, because that was a piece that came out. And March 1st was in that piece. And had we sent something, they could have changed that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you. And also, just even with Gary Van Wick had made a comment about doing more workshops. On behalf of my colleagues, I think we all agree that that would be unanimous that moving forward, we will have or host more informative workshops. And again, going back to tap or Chronicle or wherever it goes, letting the public know. I appreciate Joyce Harley. I agree with Joyce that the HRC ordinance needed to be tabled for additional consideration. It was nice to hear from Mike Westwood, longtime friend. And Mr. Tranca talked about the atrium. Someone had reached out to me just from a planning question. And it is what was being considered, and this has to be almost two years ago, considering long-term care, beautiful, beautiful facility that was being proposed. Nothing that I know of is before the planning or zoning. I know it's not before planning. I haven't seen zoning agenda. But that was discussion and I haven't heard anything about the China gourmet. And thank you, John, for saying about keeping the path safe for Mike to walk and his dog. And Anthony, you know, approaching, Anthony Puglisi, approaching a year of COVID, you continue to press on and add additional things to your agenda. So thank you for all that you do. On behalf of Camille. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry. I missed Brent. Brent, I know that from seeing the open space minutes, I know that his public amenities, environmental and social justice proposal was presented to the Open Space Commission. So I believe that they're waiting to hear more information either from the rec department. I would like to add, though, that I would imagine that there would be administrative costs to determine who would qualify for for that, for what he is proposing for the reduced membership or day passes. I think there is a lot to consider there that it does not impact the taxpayer in any way. And I believe pool membership for this year opens on March 1st. So it may not, it may be something to be discussed for next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. Councilman Rutherford.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Council President. I'll try to make my comments as brief as possible. Want to thank both Joe Fagan and Camille DiLorenzo for their informative presentations. Several people spoke in opposition to the limiting of time for public comment. I think all of those concerns are legitimate and should be considered. And again, I will restate at this point, I think, before we limit the public's time to comment, we should limit our own. Hannah Monk is certainly an impressive young lady. I I am not familiar with her outside of tonight's meeting, but she certainly handled her issue very well. I don't know enough about that, so I would encourage you to send me whatever you have and but my general feeling would be that that's a difficult one to support, at least for me. But I'm certainly open to whatever information that you may be able to provide. With regard to Mr. Scott, I'm a little disappointed that that was brought up tonight. We did talk about it in our Open Space Rec meeting. We talked about how the logistical challenges need to be addressed before we send something like that to council. There are challenges, as Councilwoman McCartney just said, with regard to identifying who would qualify. There are challenges with regard to identifying what the additional cost will be for the people that, the additional people that will come. There's a challenge in understanding which of the low, lower income current residents that use the pool would then switch out of their paid membership into the discounted membership. There are challenges in understanding a whole host of logistics. So until we work those out, we had agreed to not present it to the council. And so when we work those out, and assuming we work those out, and many of them are difficult to work out. But if we are able to work it out, then we will present something to council. To Ms. Tweetin, Althea Tweetin, I first want to apologize for not being present at your African, at your Black History Month presentation. I learned about it late and I had already had a family obligation, so I do apologize. That was an oversight on my part. And I don't think that will happen again. But you can count on my presence at your Women's History Month celebration, and I am excited that you are leading that initiative next month. Especially with such an awesome panel. Claire Silvestri spoke at great detail and very passionately about the executive drive decision. I think I will reserve my comments on executive drive until we get to that point. And same thing with former Councilman Joe Kukoviac. And by the way, I don't think his questions were answered. In particular, we don't know several of those, at least I don't. I know I missed a part of the meeting. But I don't know what the cost is for, the additional cost is for the jitney and several others. And I'll bring them up when we get to that point. For those that spoke up in opposition to the foul ordinance, I understand your, your concerns and I certainly sympathize with them. I'm not even going to address the sexual harassment claims that were made by Joyce Harley. I don't even think that was appropriate. Sally Malanga and Kevin Malanga both commented on the foul ordinance as well as executive drive. Again, I will reserve my executive drive comments for later. And I think that's it, that I know all of these other issues I think I will address later. I do want to say there is an issue in town and it was not addressed in public comment, but I did speak with the mayor about it earlier today and I let him know that I was going to address it at public comment. I think when we have neighbor disputes in town that rise to the level that the one did over the weekend, where there are accusations of antisemitism and there is a religious freedom question, I do think our approach needs to be to reconcile those issues. And I appreciate all of the professionals from the administration that have been working in that regard. And I am happy to help. I mean, my, my personal, my professional experience as a pastor in helping deal with people that are really hurt and sometimes have entrenched differences. I think I am willing to help in any way that I can to help create a structure that allows for the safe communication of some disparate ideas and opinions. I do think this is an issue that HRC can get involved in. And so I just want, you know, without trying to, you know, fan the flames anymore. I do want us to understand that the sentiment on this side, and by that I mean your elected officials and your administration, is to find a solution that helps everyone. And so I told the mayor, I would say that I know he's taken a lot of heat over that. And I don't think it's appropriate. I think there's some misinformation out there with regard to what the issue, what the actions have been. And I think if we can kind of find a framework to deal with it, we can lower the temperature and find a better outcome for everyone. Thank you, Council President, for allowing me this time.
Thank you, Councilman Rutherford. Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you so much, Council President. I appreciate this opportunity to speak before our residents. Thank you for those who have taken time out of your busy schedules to be present on this evening's agenda. So I wanted to address some of the concerns. Certainly, many of these items are on the agenda for tonight. And at that point, we can speak further about those. But I did want to address some in the commentary before we actually get to that moment. As a past councilman, I feel that we know all too well. I have sat in the past three years, council meetings as an unelected official. And we know from information that has been presented by those elected officials, present presentations by the mayor, presentations by our town CEO, that we have not had any additional proposals for the development of SX Green. And while we do talk the development of 300 executive drive, we do know that that was a separate investor. And so to that point, it is still only with the current improvements occupied by 55%. And in the world of real estate, which I professionally have been vested in for the past 19 years, 55% in a commercial property is a failure. It is not good for the investor, nor is it good for the community. So I just want to point that out from professional experience that despite COVID and the impact of working at home, this impact was pre-COVID. I have been a resident of West Orange for the past 19 years. SX Green has been underdeveloped for me in the past 10. I am in this profession. I have had investors approach me about renting this particular property. They were not willing. They were not interested. And so to the fact that we continue to iterate that there are other developers out there that are willing to invest in this property without a pilot, I speak to the fact that it has not occurred. So with that, evidence is fruit. And it has not occurred. Some of the other commentary that I want to address publicly is for the library moves. We right now are presented with a $3.1 million grant for the library to move if we act with relocating this property. All of the proposals that we will deliberate on this evening are just that. And I have not heard one resident in opposition to this proposal be willing to donate the $3.1 million that the library potentially would lose, that not only the library loses, but the township of West Orange loses. And so to that end, I just ask our residents to put your money where your argument is. So with that, unless we have a substitute at this particular point, we're willing to throw away a tremendous amount of money, um, that could possibly be invested in this community. Um, as far as the HRC is concerned, I spoke at our last council meeting regarding that. I am the immediate past, uh, president, che- chairwoman, rather, of the HRC. And while my comments, um, last meeting, I spoke to that. I spoke to the fact that it had not been deliberated upon. And yes, it did make the agenda. But as a chairwoman of that commission, I direct the commentary. The commentary is documented in notes that are published to the community. And none of those minutes that were produced, because the annual report of the HRC was presented to the mayor's office as required by the ordinance. And I will note that it is requested by the ordinance to be presented in January. It was not presented to the council until after the last meeting, um, February fif- four, 13th, 14th, around that date. However, those minutes document the information that was communicated to every member who was present at that meeting or guest. And at no time did the commission deliberate on the bylaws, on the mission, or, uh, the, the, uh, the agenda for 2021 of that commission. That task was assigned to a special committee. That committee met in December. And although I was not a part of that committee, I did suggest representatives who are now currently members of the HRC, they can attest and have continued to attest that those issues that continue to be reported upon at council meetings were not addressed. And I continue to support that the annual report, which includes the minutes from every meeting that was documented in 2020, are presented to the council and to the administration. There is no information that suggests that the Human Relations Commission wanted or requested the, the information that has been presented, um, post, uh, tho- that special task force. In addition, I want to continue to state, um, that with the chicken ordinance, I do also support that when it comes to further discussion, there are some questions, um, that we do have regarding that. And, um, with the library move, again, if there is any resident who is willing to donate, contribute, or find alternative resources for us not to lose $3.1 million to this community, by all means, please speak your piece. And with that, I complete my comments, and I ask that we continue to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilwoman. And I think that the best way to move forward is to, and, and, um, uh, Madam Clerk and I had this discussion with respect to all of the commissions and committees providing those minutes to Madam Clerk, so that she can post those minutes, um, on the website, um, accordingly, so that the public is well informed, um, of what the process and progress is. If you feel I spoke out of line, Councilwoman Williams, I just heard you say that they did not deliberate. My recollection was that it was not discussed on any agenda or any minutes anywhere. So having received the documentation that is in fact was on agenda in a minute, I felt the need to clarify. But I think moving forward, we can just post these minutes on, on the website for all of the committees and advisory boards. Okay, at this point, um, Madam Clerk, if we can move to the consent agenda, please.
Okay, approval of minutes of previous meeting, Township Council meeting, January 26th, 2021 revised, continuation of recess Township Council meeting of December 15th, 2020, and February 9th Township Council meeting. Uh, report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Um, I do have listed that there were no, no bills, but there, there were bills. So does anybody have any questions on the bills?
I, I actually have a question, and actually a point of clarification for, uh, for Mr. Gross. Um, as a, a resident has reached out to several of us with respect to the Forrester bill. Mr. Gross, can you verify whether or not there is included in those invoices, um, charges for, um, mileage?
I've not approved any, any, uh, I've not approved any payments for, um, mileage in those bills for quite some time, so.
Okay, thank you. Um, tho- that, that's all I had for bills. Do any of my council colleagues have any questions with respect to the bills? Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Okay, resolutions, uh, Council President, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
So I, I do have, I, I think it's important to pull a couple of the, the resolutions that are on the agenda just for further discussion. So, um, in that regard, I would ask that we pull Item C 38 dash 21, which is the resolution designating a conditional redeveloper for the property known as Block 155, Lot 4002 and 4202. And also feel that we should pull for further discussion and for, um, a better understanding from the, the public, Item E, which is Resolution 40 dash 21, the resolution regarding matching funds for the library development. And I did, before we move on with those, wanted, um, to express, um, to my council colleagues, as this is on for consent agenda. I am presenting a resolution, which is Resolution D 3921, and it is a resolution I am asking your support on, so that we can send this to, um, to the state in support of, um, House Bill 946, which asks them to lift and eliminate the $10,000 cap and fully restore this deductions for all state and local taxes. As some of you may know, this is a measure that was taken by the previous administration in 2017, which capped all of our, um, state, uh, and local taxes at $10,000. And as we know full well here on West Orange, this impacts us greatly because most of our residential taxes are above that. So I'm looking for council support on that to, um, eliminate, um, the cap for, um, for those questions. And for Mr. Gross, if you can briefly, um, just discuss Item B 37 dash 21, which is the resolution determining the form and other details of the 6,300,000 general obligation bonds for the downtown redevelopment area project.
Yes.
Thank you.
This is a basically a housekeeping, um, resolution that allows, uh, me to go out and sell, uh, bonds for the, this particular bond ordinance that was passed frankly back in 2011, 2012. This does not authorize new debt. This is just allows us to manage the debt that we have. Um, we have historically low, um, interest rates. It's the time to move forward and, and make permanent, these rates for us. Uh, and so we, we, we also have a, a commitment to do that, uh, with the redeveloper, uh, to do it, uh, at this time. So the timing is right, the rates are right. We ask that you approve it tonight.
Thank you, um, Mr. Gross. And then one final, um, point of clarification, if you can. Item F, which is 4121, the resolution authorizing the award of a contract for tax collection services, if you can, um, go over that.
Yeah, uh, our tax collector is leaving and retiring, uh, at, on, uh, April 1st. And we just want to make sure that, uh, we're, we're, we want to do a search and, and get, uh, to, to replace our tax collector. Uh, and frankly, there's just not enough time. So we need the services of, of a professional company, uh, to help us through the gap period. Uh, this is a firm that frankly, uh, I've done business with in multiple locations before. Um, I trained the, the individual myself, uh, in, in a, in a previous, uh, job of mine where, where they did work, and I was able to train them. They're very highly skilled. They do a great job. I can attest to. And, um, that's the purpose of this, and we ask that you, that you approve that tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Madam Clerk?
Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Don't move. All in favor? Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. Council President, you pulled Resolution 3821, Resolution of the Township of West Orange, Designating a Conditional Redeveloper for Property Known as Block 155, Lots 40 dash 02 and 42 dash 02 on the tax map of West Orange.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And, and as I stated earlier, um, I wanted to have this discussion, um, for obviously the benefit of my council colleagues, but as well as the benefit of those, um, in public who are listening. I wanted to start by asking Mr. Trank, is Mrs. Trank still on? Mr. Trank?
Yes, he is. He's just, uh, undoing his, uh, there we go.
Yeah, yeah, yes, Count.
Thank you, Mr. Trank. Um, I pulled Resolution 3821, which is Designating a Conditional Redeveloper um, for the Executive Drive property. And I know we discussed this yesterday, but for the benefit of those who were not in attendance of the meeting yesterday, can you please, um, express to council and the public the need, um, or the why for the conditional designation of a redeveloper at this time?
Yes, thank you. Um, so obviously, the item that will be considered tonight on first reading, and then March 9th on second reading, if it's approved tonight, will be the financial agreement. And so the financial agreement and the redevelopment agreement, which will not be considered tonight, but which is the subject of discussions that need to occur between now and March 9th, um, have to occur with someone. Uh, and obviously, the someone is the entity that has the option to purchase, uh, 100 Executive Drive, 200 Executive Drive, and 10 Rooney. So, uh, that, uh, entity is BNE Associates that, uh, the public has heard of in the past. And as the contract purchaser, now is the time for us to have those discussions. So, um, so again, as you correctly stated, it's only a conditional designation. Uh, if we do not reach an arrangement, and if the council does not approve it, uh, at a future meeting, then they will be de-designated. But the sole purpose is procedural tonight, so that we can have those discussions over the next, uh, 10 days to two weeks.
Can you share the correlation between the need to have this discussion now and also the March 1st deadline for the library grants? Which we were discussing again, um, because I told that.
So specifically, that's Resolution 40 dash 21 that you correctly referenced, uh, in your, uh, overview to the public. Uh, and, and, and the minute Mr. QB got the feedback from the new state librarian, uh, that there was this March 1 deadline, and really, it was a, it was a deadline. Because as you know, in December of last year, um, not only, uh, the state legislature, but the governor signed the law that allocated the $3.1 million, uh, to, among other municipalities, uh, to, to West Orange, but it's subject to a matching grant. And so, and it's subject to site control. So therefore, the only way we will have site control, and of course, what Resolution 40 dash 21 contains, is the, the, uh, as the mayor laid out last night, uh, the matching funds is to have, again, a designated developer and a redevelopment agreement and a commitment that will meet the, uh, match of the 3.1. So they are all, uh, correlated, because they're all part of showing the state that the town is in the process, subject to the final redevelopment agreement, subject to the final financial agreement, uh, and subject to site control, um, to, you know, uh, accepting the grant.
Thank you. I, I, I didn't want to confuse the public with the two resolutions that I pulled, but I did want to make that, um, correlation um, for the need to have a designated, um, conditional redeveloper at this time in order for the township to be able to obtain site control, so that we can, by this resolution, should it pass this evening, forward that as documentation to the state that we do have, uh, site control. And without designating a redeveloper, there, there is no site control. Is that correct?
Yes, you're absolutely right.
Okay, um, my council colleagues, please, if you have questions, um, I can't see hands. Oh, Councilwoman Williams, I see your hand raised. And I'm so sorry, before I, you go on, uh, Councilwoman, um, Lauren, can you help me see everybody on the screen? Because it's hard for me to.
Are you in gallery view by chance?
Uh, let's see.
You have to not share the screen, I think, for gallery view.
No.
No. How you set it up, yeah.
I'm gonna, uh, here, I, I got it now. I got it. I can move the, there. I just moved.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the next suggestion is you can move it over. Also, for the, for the town council members, you have a raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen, and what it does is it puts you in the first position when you raise your hand. So like when Tammy raised her hand before, it actually switched her to the first position. So that also will help the council president to see who is raising their hand.
Thank you.
Sure.
Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to re- reiterate the, uh, March 1st deadline, and that was something, um, information that was new to me as well. So thank you so much for providing that to the public. Um, again, in my commentary, I, I identified the fact that that's $3.1 million as, as a grant, um, from the government. And, um, I, I, I just urge us to not minimize the allocation of those funds. Um, and also wanted to reiterate that this is a, um, temporary designation. If this company does not meet, um, the requirements that are set forth, um, then this, this proposal goes to not. And so while we are perhaps identifying and, and maybe voting this initiative forward this evening, it is still not etched in stone. It still has to go to the planning board, uh, for planning site approval. And that is a mechanism of development that is already set forth, um, by our municipality. Um, so as a member, as a former member of the planning board, I just wanted to reiterate, um, that council approval tonight, um, does not eliminate any of the site plan and approvals that are necessary for this project to move forward. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. Um, any of my other colleagues, um, I can see you now, if you have any questions to pose or discussion you want to have? No questions? Um, okay.
Sorry, just want to jump in real quick. We do have an audience member that has raised their hand, and we're just a reminder that this is not the time for public comment for this issue.
Yes, um, because this is a resolution that we pulled and, and not a, an ordinance on second reading, there is no time for that comment. I also want to, while we're on, on the matter of Executive Drive, I, I looked up my, um, email, because I wanted to just give the public some dates for transparency's purposes. On, on or about, uh, December, I'm sorry, February 12th, the administration did reach out to, um, Assemblyman McKeon for his assistance in trying to facilitate an extension of that grant, um, requirement that we provide proof of, of site control. Um, in that time span, um, and that was, uh, February 12th, um, Assemblyman McKeon did respond at 4 o'clock in the afternoon that he would try and reach out to, um, the State Department to see what, if anything, could be done. Um, I received an email on, um, February 18th, um, at 10:46 in the morning, forwarding the email from the state that was sent, um, on February 17th, that indicates, please submit documentation through the portal as soon as you are able to do so, the, so that we may provide a response prior to the March 1st deadline date. That is not something that the administration knew in advance. It is certainly something that the administration asked for assistance, um, and advocacy, um, on, from our, our, our Assemblyman McKeon, who thankfully was able to, um, speak to, um, the State Department. And, um, and, and I keep saying the State Department is the state librarian for the New Jersey State Library. That is a new position that she has undertaken, and being as cautious as she should be, was able to look back and see that West Orange is not the only township in that same predicament, simply because of budgeting, issues that, that all municipalities are having at this time. So showing that proof is not, um, an issue that just our township alone had. Our issue is obviously complicated because of the, um, decisions that were taken at the appellate level, and, um, level, and kind of restarted this process. So I, I wanted to be clear that we did just receive that notice, and that's why I was okay moving up the date and asking my council colleagues if they were okay. I was very, obviously unsettled that our new council member, Councilwoman Rutherford, was not available to have that discussion, but I was told that it would be recorded and he could see it at that time. Again, we have this opportunity to participate in that discussion, but wanted to be clear with the public that that was the reason for it. And I see you, Councilwoman Rutherford.
Uh, yes, so since we're belaboring this point, I just want to put out there, I think we can all benefit from better communication with regard to the timing of the emails that were sent out noticing us to this meeting, and the conversations between council colleagues, that communication was poor. We certainly can do better, and we, we need to, especially on issues that are of this magnitude. And since it has been stressed about this $3.1 million grant, I get it. I know everyone is excited to get $3 million in the construction grant, I am as well. And I understand the logistics with regard to how we can secure that. We have to have a site control. We have to have a plan in place how we're going to use those funds. I get it. When we zoom out and look at the entire project, we have to quit saying that we're getting this for free. We are not getting it for free. There is a pilot associated, based on the numbers that are in the pilot, we will lose somewhere around $30 million in tax revenue in the first 10 years. So it is not for free. Yes, we are getting something back from the developer, but we have to be honest and open and transparent about the cost for those things. That's, that's the point I wanted to make. I know it's not really appropriate right now, but we're bringing in some stuff right now that I don't think is appropriate for this 38-21. And so, you know, I'm going to say my piece as well. Thank you, Council President.
Council President?
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Gross.
I, I just, you know, wanted to, and I appreciate the councilman's point, but we need to make sure that we don't mislead the public. We will not be losing any millions or any dollars in the future for this project. We will only be making money. The, the idea that we'll lose future tax dollars on a project that won't be built unless we provide the, the, the mechanisms to build it, which includes the payment in lieu of taxes, is just not being honest with the public. And I, I mean to be honest, I don't mean to make an accusation of that. I apologize. I, I'm just saying that we're, we're not giving the public the right information, because if this project is not built, then you're not going to see, you would not see those tax dollars. Now, in order for that to be accurate, you'd have to believe that, that a project such as this would be built without a pilot. And as we discussed last night, and while, while I can appreciate that, that there may be some disagreement amongst people, I can tell you with my 35 years of experience, I've done probably a dozen and been involved, a dozen redevelopment project in multiple municipalities in this, in, in the state, I can tell you that with the structure, the cost of doing business in Essex County, it will, there will not, particularly in this, this suburban area of, you know, West Orange, South Orange, Maplewood, you're not going to build without a pilot. It's not going to happen. And, and if it's not going to happen, if you don't believe that, 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 that you couldn't do it, I'm telling you, on top of that, they won't do it, because the other municipalities are quite anxious to have the developers come and, and, and have these projects built in their towns. And we are competing, not only with, with, we're, we're competing with other municipalities to get projects that will last in this community for 100 years and serve this community for 100 years. And, and we just really need to keep that in mind.
Councilman Rutherford, thank you, Mr. Gross.
Let, let me be more clear. The, if this prop, if this particular project, based on the numbers that they presented to us, was built without a pilot, year one, we would get somewhere over $5 million in taxes. Based on the 4.28 tax rate that we have and $120 million evaluation of the project, it would be about $5 million in property taxes that would be paid without a pilot. With the pilot, year one, we're getting about a million. Now, that to me is losing or foregoing $4 million year one in property taxes. We can disagree on whether or not the project, or any project, could be built without a pilot. I am certain this project would not be built without a pilot, because you guys have spoken to the developers and they have said that, they put it in their, in their documents. I believe them. They would not build this project without a pilot. That does not mean no project would get built there without a pilot. And with Essex Green recently being purchased for almost $100 million, with 300 Executive Drive being sold the year after it was bought for $8 million, let's walk our way through it, since we're going to bring all of this up. Councilwoman Williams just brought it up a moment ago, about 300 Executive Drive, 55% occupancy rate. That project, that building was purchased for $8 million. They put some millions of dollars into the project, and even during COVID, they're at 55% occupancy, which is a win during COVID. And it has positioned them to do well when COVID is over. So while this particular project may not get done without a pilot, that doesn't mean no project would get done without a pilot. And if, if we're going to talk about it, we have to talk about it in the sense of what are we getting now versus what else could we get? I believe we could do another project there. I think Essex Green is going to be dynamic when they're done. They've already got two plots set aside to do drive-throughs for new projects on that same space. They're going to invest millions of dollars to update that space. And when they do, Essex Green will be, you know, one of the newer malls around. Any housing next to Essex Green is going to be desirable. You have transportation to New York City, you have easy access to 280, you are in the heart of these hills, right in, in the heart of these West Orange hills. You're just on the other side of the hill, so you won't quite get a view of New York City, but we're 15 miles from New York City. You can go literally anywhere you want in the world from Essex Green without using your car. That is a desirable piece of property and could be developed in a multitude of ways, I believe profitably, without a pilot. Now, that's not what 3821 is about. So, I mean, we can keep going around and round about this, but we, we can get down to, we can, when we get to 2640-21, I think that's when this, this conversation is appropriate, but I'm happy to have it now, if that's what everyone chooses.
Thank you, Councilman Rutherford. Councilman, Councilwoman Castellino, I saw her hand up before yours, Councilwoman Williams, so I'm going to call on Councilwoman Castellino and then Councilwoman Williams, please.
Great. And thank you, thank you, Councilman Rutherford, for, for your, your, your points. Yeah, I, I, I don't mind discussing this now, because whether we do it this, or this resolution, or, or down, down later in the meeting, I guess it's better to have to just run a roll, let's just have the discussion, if everyone's okay with that. You know, I agree with you, and, and with some points, with, with something get done. The, the thing is, we don't have another project before us, number one. Number two, the, what we're getting, we're getting, I think, one of the biggest things is the, the tax appeals that, that are already awarded, that will not go through, once we move forward, we'll go into pilot mode. We're getting 10 Rooney, which I think is a valuable asset. That's why last night I said to, I made a recommendation, in fact, I think I, I, if I play back the tape, I insisted to the mayor that if he does move the animal shelter up to, to that area in 10 Rooney, not to put it in 10 Rooney, but to do a, to have the developer pay for, to place on the dog park site, but the two acres are allocating for that half million dollar project, let them build us the animal shelter building. You know, hopefully, he could renegotiate that in there. So this way, we free up inside the building for another renter. So I'm not sure, you know, if you heard that last night, because I know you did have to step away for a little bit. So I think that's important, because that's other revenue that can be contributed to the overall numbers, which, you know, which I, you know, that we're all concerned with. We do have the renter that's in there for $600,000. So there's, you know, a lot of moving parts with this. We did get the grant because of the overall project. There's the COA obligations that, that are being satisfied for the township, which is big, because if we don't satisfy those obligations, we pay out in, in that way. And Mr. Gross could get into that when, you know, they have their, their, you know, when they present the final plan to us. So we're getting a lot. So to, you know, I understand we can all go debate the numbers over and over again, but we are gaining a lot for our taxpayers. And let's not forget, you know, the senior citizen affordable building with the tax credit that also on the, are on the clock down on Mount Pleasant Avenue. You know, we're gaining that as well, and that's part of the reason why the library did receive that award, because it's such a great community project. So when you look at all the value of all the pieces of this project, can something else come in there? Can we wait? We could. I don't want to. I think this is a really great opportunity for our community, I, I think will, will benefit well. There was a lot of the same discussion years ago in regards to the Edison Lofts. And again, that, that property now is the, the revenue that's being created at that property, and it's not even at full capacity yet. There's still a ways to go, and we're already ahead of the game with that project at, at no cost to the taxpayer. So, you know, we could go on and on and on, and I, I definitely agree with you, something else could come in and maybe not be offered, but we are getting so much in return. And I think that's what makes this attractive for us. So I'll defer to Councilwoman William, Williams.
Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to reiterate that we continue to have this debate on that there is other, or are other, have been other opportunities for developers to come in. I have lived in West Orange as a resident for 2000, since 2002. I have been a licensed real estate professional since 2002. In the past 10 years, I am unaware of any major developmental opportunities in, in this particular section of West Orange. It has been underutilized. It has been underoccupied. And so I am a professional in this industry. The facts are the facts. We can argue them, we can debate them, but if there were other opportunities for development, we would not be deliberating or discussing the fact that there are other opportunities for development. There have not been any. So I just want to continue for us to be factual and to not suggest opportunities that aren't real. Yes, we have a, a grandiose opportunity. We are 12 miles. Trust me, I believe, I know. I tell clients every day on a weekly basis, who are looking to move to residential communities, whether it be for commercial opportunities or residential opportunities, we are close to the Mecca of New York City. However, within all of that successibility of West Orange, we are still deliberating on 100, 200 Executive Drive and 10 Rooney Circle. There are no other proposals before us. And so I urge us to deliberate and make a decision on what is currently before us. We have not seen anything else of realism. And so to continue in this grandiose, I can tell a homeowner every day, any day, let's just keep waiting. That's not the philosophy that is utilized in real estate. The philosophy in real estate is if you have an offer, deliberate on the validity of that offer and make your decision. If that decision is not best for you and your needs, whether it be a commercial homeowner or a residential homeowner, you deal with what is on the table. This opportunity that is, is realistic, again, that's not the world that real estate deals with. You deal with the offers on the table. If we are not satisfied with what is presented to us at this particular time, then we simply vote no. However, if we, as elected officials, believe that what is presented to us is beneficial to this community at this present, at this presented time, then that's what we should be deliberating on. And so I just urge us to stop grandiosing about things that have not been presented to us. Let's deal with what is on the table. Let's make a decision based on what has been presented. If you are not comfortable as an elected official in making that decision, then that is our opportunity to say no. But based on what is presented to us at this particular time, when no other presentation has been given to us, I, I just urge us to decide and make a decision now on the future of West Orange as, as presented to us, and we are not losing, we are gaining. There is no reason for us to not acknowledge the pluses that this pilot is offering to the community. All, many of the other pilots that have been exemplified in neighboring towns have not been the beneficiary of what we are gaining. And so I, I just urge us to focus on the positives and not look to the future for something that is not real. We have to deal in reality. We have to deal in what is here present and now, and this is what our job is as, as elected officials. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Councilwoman Rutherford to speak, and then I'm gonna motion to, because we do have two other.
So I won't, I won't belabor the point. I know we're going to come back to it later on when we get to 2640-21, but I will say in, with regard to Councilwoman Castellino, I think her points are exactly why we need to have this conversation, right? It doesn't have to be contentious, we don't have to make up words, grandiosing is not a word. We don't have to be condescending, but we can have a conversation about the value of the project, based on the, her, her point just now about moving the dog, the animal shelter to the dog park. How, how do we get to that point if we don't have the conversation, right? So all of these ideas, all of these points, this is the place to have the conversation so that we get the best outcome. And even if I don't support it, my voice is, is, is forcing those that do support it to defend their position and why, right? And, and there will be some times that I'll support something and others won't, and I will have to defend why I support it. And that's how you get the best outcome. So, you know, it's, debate should not be shunned, voices should not be silenced. I mean, there's a respectful way that we can do this, and I think if we do it in that regard, we'll get a better outcome for West Orange. That's, that's my, my final point. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Thank you to my council colleagues for a robust discussion, and I am going to make a motion for 3821, please.
So I'll second that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Castellino?
Uh, yes.
Councilwoman McCartney? Councilman Rutherford?
No.
Councilwoman Williams?
You're muted, Councilwoman.
Yes.
Council President, Matute Brown?
Yes.
Okay. The second resolution that was pulled was 4021, Resolution Regarding Matching Fund, Matching Funds for Library Development. Council President, Matute Brown.
Thank you. I wanted either, Mr. Hanley is still on, on the call. Can you please discuss the, and there was a question about this earlier, pose with respect to the RAB bond of one point, I'm sorry, where am I? I need my glasses. Can you discuss the RAB bond for the library, the matching grants?
Sure. So the RAB bond was demonstrated in the presentation last night, is paid from the pilot, but the net dollars.
I, I can't, I can't hear him. My, Mr. Hanley, I can't hear you.
Can we also have all the, the county council members mute themselves? It would also help with the background noise. Thank you.
Tell, can you hear me or can you not hear me?
I, yes, you're good.
Okay, yeah. So the, as was demonstrated in the presentation last night, the RAB bond is paid the RAB bond is paid from the pilot. But the dollars that are received from the pilot netted out the cost of that RAB bond. So it is, in fact, a deduction from the total dollars received. But the one point three million dollars that was the net revenue received from the, you know, total dollars across the whole project that we're working on is the net dollars. And the developer is entirely at risk for the repayment of that RAB bond. Hi, you're, you're.
Your muted.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
Can you expand a little bit about, about the developer is totally at risk of that RAB bond?
So the, the only way that RAB bond gets paid is after the municipality gets paid. And it is, you know, if no revenue were generated on the project or some kind of disaster, the developer would be at risk for, you know, they wouldn't receive the payments on that RAB bond. It is nonrecourse to the municipal budget.
And and can you talk to the actual practice of RAB bonds in redevelopment projects for the understanding of the public?
Sure. So the, the, the RAB bond is a way to contribute to infrastructure in the context of redevelopment projects. And this is certainly a, a, a way to transfer risk to the development community to pay for items that the public receives upfront. Uh, you're, you're muted, Council President.
Thank you. Councilman Rutherford, I see your hand up. Is he frozen?
Yeah, he's frozen.
Yes, he is frozen. He just popped off for a second. I'm hoping that he will pop back on. And he did.
You're muted.
No, you're good.
It's my wifi. That whole piece froze. I'm terribly sorry.
I, I saw your hand was up, Councilman, so I called on you. You're, you're muted.
Good enough.
And I got him. I got him. He's good. He's good.
Okay. So I, I was just, and I missed most of that. So you may have answered it. And if you did, I apologize. But my understanding is that you were saying that although the RAB bond is paid out of the proceeds of the pilot, the, the, the figures that are quoted in the pilot are net figures. So that we still get that ten and a half percent of AGR in that first period. And the, and the, the RAB bond payment is not netted out of that, right? Am I saying that right? I understand that right?
No, let me, let me say the way, let me describe it and you tell me if it was the way you understood it. So the, the total dollars that are coming in to the municipality include the one point two million, which we expect to be the ten and a half percent, the taxes. And then we subtract the payment in the RAB bond and the existing taxes to come up with a cumulative net number. And that cumulative, cumulative net number is one point three million dollars. So I mean, all right. So I mean, the, it's easier when the, the.
Yeah, I have.
The, the presentation is on the board, but the presentation shows all the dollars coming in and all the dollars going out. So the, we added the pilot and the lease payments. But we subtracted the existing taxes and the RAB bond payments to get to a net number. So if, if there was no existing taxes and prospective taxes and lease payments, then the ten and a half percent you would subtract the RAB bond payment from. But that's not a like reflective picture of the whole transaction. So the entire transaction, that says one point three million. But the specific RAB transaction is connected to the pilot. So it's the one point two million less the three hundred fifty thousand for the RAB payment.
So what are we netting year one?
Well, I mean, year one, we don't know exactly. The numbers we're giving you are stabilized numbers when the project is producing its stabilized revenue stream. So I mean, year one depends on where in the year it happens, how quickly the lease up occurs, et cetera.
So, but by those numbers,
Yes.
in the pilot,
Yep.
It says we're getting, and I'm not looking at it right now, but I can go to it. We're getting about, uh, let me just get to it.
Councilman, can you let us know what page you're on?
I sure will.
Why don't you find it? Thank you.
Is that exhibit ten, Councilman?
I'm going through, so I'm not sure.
For those, for those while we're waiting to get to the page, for those who are in public and you would like to follow along, if you are not there already, the agenda is on the township website with all of the documents that council is, is looking at. Things are attached there.
So, so it's, it is table ten. Exhibit sixteen is the immediately preceding page. It's a table ten. Looks like this. I've, I've made some notes, highlighted some things.
Yeah.
So, so assuming it was, these numbers are assuming the project was fully leased day one.
It's assuming a stabilized project, yes.
Okay. So under those circumstances, and we know that that's not the reality, but we have to have a basis to kind of discuss it. So if.
I mean, you want to know what's happening in a base case scenario for your project. So obviously there's a lease up period. I mean, no one
Right.
is suggesting there is not that.
Me either, right. But you know, this is serving as, you know, the document that we're going to work off of, have a conversation about and try and understand.
Sure, hundred, hundred percent. So we want to know in the base case stabilized scenario, what is the impact to the existing taxpayer? None of us, no one on this council and this administration wants to not do a deal that isn't to the net benefit of the existing taxpayer. That's the goal. And that's what we're trying to demonstrate and what we believe.
Sure. And I'm not accusing you of that. So please, uh, don't, don't.
I, I just want to explain it as clearly as I can. I, I.
Yeah, I don't, I think we.
It's not meant to be defensive. It's meant to be a clear communication of our and what I think your goal is, what you're asking for and what we are trying to deliver.
Right. So, so based on this understanding, this table ten,
Yep.
the minimum payment, the minimum payment we would get is just under one point two million. Is that right?
Yeah.
Right. And, and, and then these, you know, going down that far right column, that represents the minimum payment. And the way we would get more is if the project was much more successful. They had higher rents or whatever the case may be.
Sure.
But under this scenario, one, just under one point two million is year one.
Yep.
Now.
It was stabilized year. And I'd like to use stabilized year. They.
And I get it. I apologize, but.
So it's probably, it's, it's probably not year one.
Right. Well, we know they've got construction and in, and in the pilot, we talk about if they do it in phases.
Call it year two slash three.
Right. Well, just for argument's sake, to make it easy for those that are listening.
Yeah.
The first year where we're estimating a, a, a payment in lieu of taxes.
Yep.
Based on this, these assumptions, it's about one point two million.
Correct.
Right. So.
The, the first year that the building is leased up is what I, I, I would like to describe it as a, like to be as accurate as I can be.
So for those that don't.
Probably not that.
Right. For those that don't understand, and this is for the benefit of those that are watching.
Yep.
Edison loss is still not fully leased. So you, you wouldn't be able to say what it would have, you know, provided year one. We've already passed year one and they're not fully leased. So whatever that assumption was, it's something less than that because it, it wasn't fully leased. I, I, I get it. I want them to understand it as well.
Okay. We, we.
But for this, for, so, so it's, it starts at one point two. And by the end of year ten, the minimum payment is about one point four.
Yep.
The point that I was trying to make, and Mr. Gross, I, I use some loose language, you know, I apologize. But the point I was trying to make is if this project was done without a pilot, and I, I don't want to argue whether or not it would be done without a pilot.
Wait, just, I, I mean, Councilman, we can't have the conversation if you want to believe it would be done without a pilot, right? The, we are making the statement that this is the deal that can be done under these circumstances. So.
I understand. Hold on one second, Mr. Hanley. Hold on one second.
Sure.
For residents to understand what the cost is for what we're getting, we have to compare it with and without the pilot.
Not true. No. I, for residents to understand what they're getting or not getting, we have to compare it to what we're getting now and what we believe we can get from this deal. Because the third option, which is what you're describing, is a fantasy. It doesn't exist. No one's offered it. The bill, the projects have been there, sitting there as class B office space. No one's offered to build this project at conventional taxes and no one would because there would be no return on that project. So I am making the statement and we are collectively making the statement if you decide to go forward that this project needs the financial agreement that we are providing to it.
Okay. If I, if I just, just piggyback on that for just a second, I think there's one of the points that's missing here. It is that we, we're saying that the project like this can't be built without a pilot, not because the developers have convinced us of such that, you know, that they won't pay or that they can't pay. And we say, okay, well, we believe you. That's not the case. We have looked at the economics of building on that site, the reality of, of, of the numbers and made a determination that, that it can't be done. You know, on our own, not, it's not the, you know, the, it's not that the, the developers are telling us and we're, we're just believing it. I mean, Mike and I have gone through this, my, you know, Mike's been doing this for a long, long time. Gone through it in our own and made a determination that the numbers don't work for that site. Just doesn't. So it's not.
The numbers for four hundred and twenty five units and, uh, uh, you know, using ten Rooney, the way we're gonna use it, don't work for that site.
Any one hundred million dollar project with a, with a similar rent roll. Well.
Okay. So that, that's, that's, this, that's where we disagree. So that's where we disagree. We've not gone, we've not high, one of the things that we've done poorly, this is not to blame or accuse anyone, is coordinate our development efforts around town. We don't have someone who is actively marketing West Orange to developers. This is prime real estate. We have some of the best hills in Essex County. We're close to New York City. We have public transportation and access to highways. We're close to an airport. And even though we don't have a train station in town, we have train stations in Orange, South Orange and Montclair nearby. We have two malls in the neighboring towns as well as two in our own town. So this is desirable real estate for the right, that lot is desirable real estate for the right project.
Councilman, you are, you couldn't be more correct. But we still have to do the math. And that's the reason that the other towns around you that you're in competition with are using the same tools that we are suggesting be used here.
So I don't disagree with pilots in general. I think the pilot at Edison is perfectly appropriate. I think in spaces like that, to get a large project done, you're going to have to, I mean, you can get some smaller projects done in a corridor like that, but you're not going to get a big project. I think here at Essex Green, it isn't. And that's why I want to talk about that project with or without it. Cause I think that same project is profitable without a pilot.
Yeah, Councilman, and that's in South Orange. And South Orange, I can tell you, because I negotiated for the, of the deals there and they have about a, I don't, I think it's eight now that they're up to. Right on the train station, South Orange is if it's not the, the busiest train station on that line, it's the second busiest train station on that line. And yet they, and, and they have a similar cost structure that, that we have. And they have not put in a project, a major project without a, a, a pilot in the last twenty years. So, so you, 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 your evidence is out there. We can all say, geez, we really think it could be done, but I'm telling you what is being done and, and how it's being done. And nobody but nobody is doing it without a pilot within this economic structure that we have.
So South Orange didn't build up South Orange Village using pilots. Montclair didn't build, uh.
They did. They did. Not a project or two. Every major project there is on a pilot. I can tell you that because I negotiated them.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, the, you know, the probably, if we went across, across similar areas in North Jersey, it would be almost all of the major multifamily developments have received financial assistance. And that financial assistance is important unless you're in a place that has a super low tax rate. And you, you can find those places and I can tell you where they are, whether it's Hanover Township or Flun Park or something, where the net effective tax rate is one percent. And they don't have to give a pilot because their tax rate is effectively a pilot. And that is not true when your effective tax rate is near four percent. And in Essex County or most of Union County, Western Hudson County, et cetera, all of the municipalities are utilizing this tool because the construction costs are similar and the rents are similar. So if you are in that second area that is outside of the Gold Coast, you're getting the type of rents we are likely to receive. The cost of construction requires a certain amount of, you know, it, after the tax rate is too high, you can't build those projects. And that's why, whether it's Rutherford or Hackensack or Union Township or, you know, Bloomfield or Belleville, everyone is using the same, same tools because that's the math that gets projects done. And we.
Are heavier on commercial development than we are. I mean, Bloomfield, and in Montclair is heavy commercial.
But that, that has nothing to do with the return on a residential multifamily project.
It, it absolutely does. So if they're, if they're doing a mixed use project, and I think they're doing one on Bloomfield Avenue right now in Montclair. Where the old Jaguar dealership used to be, or maybe they finished that one. I'm not sure. If you're doing that kind of a project where you also have a significant component of commercial ratables, the commercial properties are not using the same tax, they're not using the same services as the residential.
I mean, they.
Quite to the contrary.
Well, I, I mean, Roseland is the best comp. You know, you're knocking down B O office space to build multifamily. Uh, you know, you're knocking down B office space to build multifamily mixed-use residential. And Roseland's a lower effective tax rate than West Orange, right? They, it's the same construction costs that, you know, if you go those couple of miles to go from Roseland to West Orange, doesn't cost you a different amount to build the building. And, and they made the decision that you're being asked to make. You don't have to believe it.
But how large is that?
Camp, it's a perfect comp. It's, it, it's actually, I mean, it's, it's not, it, it's the same exact type of, of project.
What, what, how many acres is that? We're talking about, how many acres are we talking about at Executive Drive versus?
I, I don't, I, I can't compare the acreage, but why does it matter? Why does it matter to you? The, in the context of?
Got a huge desert of, of office space. It's a, I mean, it's like five times the size or four times the size.
You're using two specific properties. It's not, it, it's no.
You know, probably towers in a four-story building.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna interrupt at this point. I'm so sorry, because I, I know that, um, we do have to take on, a vote on this, and we still have a discussion for, um, ordinance in the same, um, topic that we're talking about. So I'm not cutting you off, Councilman. I'm just gonna move this agenda along, so we can get to the ordinance that actually discusses what we're discussing. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yeah, uh, Council, in regards to this ordinance, can Mr. Hamley, I know the mayor is making a present tation, he's cleaned up his presentation from the other night and adding to it. Um, I, you know, and I, I know this, and, and just listening to Mr. Hamley, and again, we don't have it in front of us, and neither does the public. If we could just look at that slide, uh, with the rap bond in it, just to make sure Mr. Hamley and, and Mr. Gross that that slide, that the public, we could really break it down for the public to understand, because it was a little confusing in the explanation, and so if you could just make sure before it's posted on the website or wherever, um, that, you know, you, you look at it and in layman's terms, so.
We'll, we'll talk to the mayor about that.
Okay, thank you.
Right, and again, I'm not cutting Councilman Rutherford off. We're gonna have this discussion for, um, the ordinance that is, um, specific to the discussion that's happening now. I just want to be able to, um, move the resolution that I pulled, which, I, I motioned to, um, for a roll call vote.
Your motion to approve forty dash twenty-one?
Second.
Okay.
Sorry, I did not hear that. My wifi, I apologize. I heard none of that.
I'm sorry, we just made a motion. Um, Council President Matu Brown made a motion to approve forty dash twenty-one, and Councilwoman Castellino signed it, and now I'm about to do the roll call vote.
It's the re, the resolution regarding the matching funds for the library developments.
Right. Okay. Uh, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney? Councilman Rutherford?
No.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matu Brown?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, we're on to ordinances on second and final reading. Ordinance twenty-six, twenty-nine dash twenty-one, and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter Seven, Traffic Subsection seven dash eighteen point one. One-way streets designated subsection seven dash seventy-three point three. Temporary parking prohibited for snow plowing and removal. Subsection seven dash eleven, parking time limited on certain streets during certain hours. Subsection seven dash twelve, parking prohibited for street cleaning and maintenance. Subsection seven dash thirteen, parking prohibited at all times on certain streets. Subsection seven dash fourteen point one C, night parking restricted. Subsection seven dash fourteen point seven, alternate side parking, and subsection seven dash twenty-five, loading zones of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So.
Okay, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney? Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matu Brown?
Yes. Councilwoman Castellino, um, would you like to discuss this ordinance for the benefit of the public and um, is this, I'm sorry, hold on, twenty-six, twenty-nine, this is for Ashland, correct? Ashland Avenue, not the parking meters.
Uh, is this one Ashland Avenue?
It's not?
I don't believe so.
Yeah, I, I, is Mr. Lepore here? I think this one is just for various streets for, uh, the snow plowing and street cleaning and alternate, uh, sides, um.
You're, you're the, on, on second reading, this is for Ashland Avenue.
That's okay, I'm, I'm looking, I'm saying, did we miss, you know?
I don't have it in front of me, I apologize, Council President.
Okay, that's okay. I thought this was the, the main street, um.
No, that, that, that's okay. We discussed this in the downtown Alliance conversation. I think Mr. Lepore, he was going to, uh, um, you know, make sure he surveyed the, uh, community, and, and I assume that has all been done?
Uh, note, notice was given to, uh, all the residences in, in businesses in this block of Ashland Avenue, as well as Charles Street. Uh, notice was also given at the concierge, the Edison Battery and Edison Lofts, so that, uh, they could, um, disseminate that to, uh, their tenants.
Great. I, I, I did have a question, um, and, and I don't know if any of my council colleagues received, um, a phone call and an email from a resident in the area that shared concerns about this becoming a one-way street because of the limited parking that already exists with the Edison Loft residence who, um, park on the street as opposed to the garage that they, uh, have the option to, um, park in. Mr. Lepore, can you discuss the, um, the reason why the one-way street would provide more parking for the residents in that area?
What, what it's going to allow us to do is, uh, to have parking on both sides of Ashland Avenue, all the way from Park Avenue, uh, to Lakeside Avenue. It's gonna eliminate any of the alternate side regulations that exist there. Yeah, there are also some time limit regulations that are being eliminated. Uh, so we're going to provide for more parking in that neighborhood, but, uh, due to the width of the roadway, the amount of traffic in this area, um, also the need to make deliveries, uh, to the Edison Lofts building. Um, it's not just, uh, necessarily a COVID-related matter, where more people are home and getting more deliveries. There's just much more online shopping than there used to be, so we need to create a loading zone on this street so that, uh, deliveries, uh, trucks are not double parked. So we're here to make more parking on the street, but simply with the width of the street, uh, we're not going to have safe movement of traffic with it as a two-way street.
I, I, I have experienced that, um, myself, um, recently, where there was a moving truck there, um, and you had to make a U-turn in that very tight, um, street to, to be able to get around, um, that area. I, I also wanted to bring up, um, because you, you mentioned a loading zone. I also went to the area because the resident informed me that there are no parking signs, um, that have been put up with, um, zip ties. I, I don't know if that was the township that did that. I don't see an ordinance um, for no parking on the sign. Um, I, I should have shared the pictures with you. I apologize that I did not. Um, but is, has the township, um, provided no parking zone in that area? It's not on Ashland, it is, um.
I, I believe at, at one time, and I'd have to go back and check, um, there, there was a small area used for loading, um, on, on Charles Street.
Uh, is that, is, so, so would you be able to confirm that, um, with us? Because I, I, I was surprised too, to see them put up with twist ties and not.
I will have to check that, um, but none of this ordinance covers, uh, Charles Street. If there's something that needs to be changed, we can change it. If there's something that's not properly posted, uh, either for, for ordinance or, uh, just the method, we will correct that.
Yeah, I, I was just asking, because you made the reference to creating, um, a loading zone, and because I saw the no parking at any time to of those signs in an area that looks like a loading zone right by their, um, their dumpsters. I didn't know if that was already an area designated for a loading zone by the township.
It may be, um, I, I, again, I'm trying to recall the request, but I, I think they needed, they may have needed an area clear of parking so that they could take out their, um, uh, their mechanized, uh, trash compacters uh, to allow that those to be brought out, uh, uh, to a compactor truck to be loaded. And if parking was there, then, then that becomes difficult to do. I, I will check that.
All right, thank you. Um, I don't have any other questions. Um, Councilwoman Castellino, I see your hand up.
Yeah, yes, thank you, Council President. So, um, the, uh, property manager from, uh, the Lofts is on our Downtown Alliance Board now, and that has been very helpful. I know he's met with Mr. Lepore, he's supposed to meet with, uh, our Police Department. Uh, the, there is still, uh, multiple parking spots in the Lofts parking area, and they have been encouraging their residents to obtain their parking passes, so they should, because they should be parking in the garage. I hope a lot of them took advantage of that, especially with all this snow, they could be in a nicely covered garage. So, um, so they're working on that, so I just wanted the council to, to know that. And, um, you know, they're, they're working with the Police Department, so I think it's important to bridge our communication. And, and just a reminder too, we have to, uh, believe this second reading, so we have to give the public time too on this.
Yes, absolutely. Um, Councilwoman, thank you, Councilwoman Castellino. Councilwoman Williams, I see your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Um, just wanted to clarify, um, so do we have a designated move-in, and move-out, um, zone if we were to change this, um, ordinance? Is there a space designated for residents who may need a moving truck to move in or out of the property um, without any hindrance?
Um, Ca- Councilman Williams, uh, in the vicinity of the, the entrance to the Lofts, which is actually an, an address of thirty-three Ashland Avenue, we're creating an, an area about a hundred fifty feet in length uh, to be used by delivery trucks, moving vans, uh, even occasionally a resident of the Lofts will ask if they could, uh, deposit a pod on the street and load it themselves. So we're, we're creating an, an, an area, uh, for, for many types of deliveries and, and moving services.
So I, I, you know, again, this is my profession. Um, I just encountered in a relocation last weekend um, something that was unbeknownst to me, um, the enforcement of a building in another municipality um, that had restrictive move-in, move-out, um, opportunities. It wasn't widely published. I was shocked when I was told that my client could not move out on a Saturday. Um, I know that this does not entail those type of restrictive opportunities, um, but I do want to make sure, because this is a residential multi-use or, or multi-occupancy family, um, that Ashland Avenue is not the closest entrance-exit, um, Main Street would be more convenient, depending on what part of the facility you lived on. So is there any opportunity, um, for you to enter or exit or move in or out of the facility not using the Ashland Avenue entrance or exit?
Um, I, I'm not sure, except for, for the residential units that are over retail, that, that front on, on Main Street, certainly they would need to use Main Street. But, uh, I believe, uh, again, this, the, the major entrance and exit point for this building is, is through thirty-three Ashland Avenue.
So a moving truck cannot enter to the garage based on height restrictions?
That, that's correct.
So you would have to, a, and I have friends who live in that building, so to, to go through the parking garage to enter or exit the building, as opposed to being able to park on Main Street temporarily to move in or out, i- is somewhat of a hardship. And to move in or out of a two-to-three bedroom unit might take more than four to five hours. So I'm just wondering, again, what type of hardship with this imposed on residents who need to enter occupancy the building? And is there an inspiration?
I, I, again, Councilman Williams, that, that's why we, we've created a fairly long loading zone on, on Ashland Avenue, so that there is an area that can be kept free for people that need to move in or out, or have a, uh, uh, perhaps a longer-term delivery on a particular day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of my council colleagues have any additional questions before I go to public? Thank you. Um, Ms. Moderator, can we, um, open for public discussion on this resolution two-six-two-nine dash two-one, please?
Absolutely. If anyone would like to speak on this, um, ordinance, uh, if you can raise, raise your hand button. And there is no one raising their hand.
Thank you, um, Madam Clerk, please.
Yes, is there a motion to adopt twenty-six, twenty-nine dash twenty-one on second and final reading?
So move.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney? Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
You're muted.
I'm sorry, Ms. Williams, you're muted.
Yes, thank you, no problem. I, I'm gonna vote no on this one.
Okay, uh, Council President Matu Brown?
Yes.
Okay. Um, ordinance twenty-six, thirty-seven dash twenty-one, and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter Three, Rules of Council of the Revised General Ordnances of West Orange to comport with current practice and increase efficiency and effectiveness of council meetings as amended. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Madam Clerk, before, uh, we take a roll call on the motion, and I'm, I'm not sure as to process or procedure in this regard, um, but in, uh, my deliberations and discussions with some of my council colleagues and listening to the public, I would like to motion to table this, uh, ordinance.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you.
Okay, hold on one moment. Um, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes, to table, yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matu Brown?
Yes, and, um, I, I just want to thank my council colleagues for their consideration. I know there's been a lot of discussion um, back and forth into our legal department for the work that they put in, um, for our considerations, but I, I do feel that, um, the, the public has, has been very vocal and very loud, and it's certainly not our intention to silence. I thought giving them an additional opportunity with additional meetings um, was meeting us halfway, um, but I hear you loud and clear residents of West Orange. Um, so I am, I'm thankful for the support to table this motion, um, this ordinance.
Council President, will this be heard on March ninth?
Um, I don't believe so. I, I would have to have that discussion with my, um, council colleagues, which I haven't.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure so I could follow up.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so ordinances on first reading, twenty-six, thirty-eight dash twenty-one, and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter Seven, Traffic Subsection seven dash fourteen point three. Parking time limited on certain streets during certain hours of certain days, and subsection seven dash twenty-six point one, bus stops of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So move.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matu Brown?
Yes, um, and can I, I know this is on first reading, but for the benefit of the public, I would like, uh, Councilwoman Castellino, if you can, um, give your overview on the reason, um, that the Downtown West Orange Alliance and yourself are asking for this, um, ordinance, please.
Sure, so, uh, Director Brill had, um, thank you, Council President, Director Brill had, um, identified, uh, multiple parking, uh, locations, um, on Main Street that, um, from, well, pretty much daily, that there are, whether there uh, some residents that live. uh, some residents that live in some apartments, or whether they're, um, actually work in some of the businesses, they, they park all day when there's, there's parking spots in the, um, in, uh, in, in the parking lots available. Um, so that has caused an issue with some of our uh, businesses or business owners because of where they're located. And for example, uh, we're trying to work on Lightbulb Cafe over in that area that someone could pull up, run in for a cup of coffee, you know, fifteen minutes, the bakery's right across the street. And it would really, really enhance their businesses. So she, um, she had talked to many of the business owners. So tonight, I believe in Mr. Laporte jumped in, because I know you identify the spots. I'm going off memory. Uh, this is across the street from um, the Elks on Main Street by the Shoemaker. So, uh, in front of our Shoemaker, I believe two spots there. Uh, there's a convenience store right there as well. And I believe right around the corner on Harrison. Is that one on tonight, Mr. Laporte?
And, and everything from Ashwood Terrace to Harrison, as well as, uh, Park Drive North on the west side
Yeah.
of Main Street up to the Elks. Uh, approximately mid-block between Ashwood Terrace and Harrison Avenue. There'll be about, um, maybe a half a dozen stalls. That'll be limited to fifteen-minute parking. Then there's a convenience store there. Uh, there's also the Shoemaker that is, is also there. Uh, and they're the ones that requested the much more rapid rate of turnover.
Yeah. So yeah, fifteen minute, you have two-hour parking. Now, uh, these opportunities, uh, for these business owners are only as good as the enforcement. And, uh, Brett Squires was part of the conversations, working with Mr. Laporte. He, uh, we always have a representative from the police department at every downtown alliance meeting, which has been helpful. So we can, um, we, uh, could get these, uh, initiatives, uh, in place sooner than later. So, um, they were putting together an enforcement plan. And, uh, so we hope it, it, it works so folks could find spots and, uh, frequent our beautiful downtown stores.
Thank you, Councilwoman Castellino. Um, I, I have to say that I am, I'm excited for the opportunity to, to assist our businesses. I know that we are all on the campaign of shop local because we need to support our businesses. Um, and I think this is a, a step in that right direction. Um, and I'm glad that you answered the question before I asked it with respect to enforcement.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I'm, I'm looking forward to that. The other question I, I did have was with respect to, um, those residents who live in that area. Um, are there alternative areas for them to park? I know it's metered and restricted for certain hours, but, um, what are the other areas in that, in that, um, vicinity with, that they can use to park?
Well, Quigley's Lot is right across the street, and Mr. Laporte could speak to the other locations.
Yeah, I, I think Quigley's Lot, uh, where there's both shorter and, and longer term, meaning, uh, all-day parking i- is available there. Uh, there are some neighborhood streets, Ashwood Terrace. Um, i- is available for, for residents to park on. Uh, so, some of the residences here, some of the smaller apartment buildings, uh, do have some off-street parking. Uh, but just to remind everybody, nobody can park on Main Street overnight. Uh, that's prohibited by the town and the county. So there are places where they have to find a place to park, uh, off of Main Street.
And, and we had last year, if council remembers, um, that, and our, well, for our new, our new colleagues, uh, this year, that, uh, Bethany Church, um, we have an agreement with them for overnight parking in their law for permit parking. So, and there's some other conversations happening. We're trying to be creative how we could work out some other spots. So we're always looking to assist, assist folks, but at the same time, um, you know, some vehicles are just left, you know, for overnight when they're not supposed to. So they will get that ticket, but, you know, they'll leave them there all day. So we have to help our, our business owners and, um, you know, we're always available for, for residents to, if they have any concerns, we could always, you know, work with them uh, in regards to parking issues.
Thank you, Councilwoman Castellino. Do any of my other, uh, council colleagues have any comments or questions they want to pose with respect to this ordinance? Okay. And for the public, just
I do, uh, count
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes. That's okay. I'm kinda on camera, off camera. You may see my hand, you may not, and sometimes you don't see my hand raised, but no problem. Thank you. Um, I just have a concern. Again, I, I, I am representative of the industry that I work in professionally. And what I do know is a lot of municipalities do not have overnight parking. Um, I'm also very concerned because right now, residents are working from home. A lot of offices are not built, uh, open, and so while we may have an increased, um, incident of parking on Main Street, I, I, I don't want to penalize residents who ordinarily wouldn't have an alternative for parking. I am sensitive to the pa- fact that we do have, um, some overnight parking locations close to these areas identified. My questions would include, are those overnight parking locations, uh, do they require any type of payment? Are those free parking? Um, those alternative spaces during the day, are those also free parking? I mean, we're in the midst of COVID. Most people are working from home. A tremendous amount of people are working from home. So are we now seeking to penalize residents based on a national pandemic and them parking? Um, if this has been a constant problem, I understand that, but I also am sensitive to the fact that, you know, I work from home. So, you know, I, 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 I'm just being conscious of what is really occurring in our municipality, and not just our municipality, but across the board.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. Um, Councilwoman Castellino, did you want to respond?
Uh, yeah, so I'll, I'll, we'll have Ms. Brill come on the next meeting. So she, she knows, you know, she asked for this for a particular reason, and it's not to penalize any residents, um, it's to help our business owners. And so let, let, we'll have her come on the next call. And, uh, so she could give us further information, or she could write us up a short report as well. So I'll let her, her speak for her request.
Thank you, Councilwoman Castellino. Councilwoman McCartney, I see your hand up.
Yes, thank you. Uh, well, to, to follow up on Tammy, yes, we are trying to support the businesses in the area looking for their parking. But then to that point, um, we don't want to restrict that for the residents. How many parking spaces are we actually talking about?
Very few.
Very few, right. I think there are only a couple on the corner of, um, Harrison, uh, Washington, I'm sorry, Washington and Main Street.
Right, right, right now, we're not addressing that corner yet. We're just up by Eagle Rock and Lord's.
Yeah.
Um, I could, um, also reach out to Megan Brill. Perhaps some of the schools that are down near Ashwood Terrace and the, um, and the bus stop. Uh, maybe they don't have to have the, uh, the restrictions on it, but I'll, I'll go over that with Ms. Brill.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that was a good point. Uh, Councilwoman McCartney, I, I counted four, but it's certainly a good, um, a question to ask. Um, Megan, so thank you very much for that. Um, can, uh, Madam, um, Clerk, please?
Ordinance twenty-six-thirty-nine dash-twenty-one. Um, Mr. Laporte asked that this ordinance be pulled from the agenda this evening.
Yes.
I didn't receive, um, a correct copy of it, and I need to advertise it. And in order to do so, I need, there's a certain timeline I have to follow, and therefore it won't be up for, i- it, the publication won't make it in time. So
Okay.
I, I have to reintroduce it on the next council meeting on March ninth.
Okay, so do we, uh, make a t- a motion to table twenty-six-thirty-nine dash-twenty-one?
Some move. Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney? Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matu Brown?
Yes.
Um, ordinance twenty-six forty dash twenty-one, ordinance of the township of West Orange, approving an application for a long-term tax exemption and authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with Green Essex Partners Urban Renewable LLC. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Second.
Okay, Councilwoman Castellino?
Um, I'll, I'll vote yes for the discussion, but I'm not supportive.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
No.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matu Brown?
Yes.
So this is, um, ordinance twenty-six forty dash twenty-one on our agenda. It is item C. Um, the ordinance, um, as just read, uh, by title, uh, with respect to authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with Green Essex Partners.
Oh, oh.
Yes, Councilwoman Castellino.
Oh, could we have just a brief discussion on this, on this ordinance?
Yeah.
Real quick?
I, I wanted to. I was gonna ask a question of, of Mr. Trank.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I thought you moved to the next one. I'm getting tired, falling asleep here.
No, don't fall asleep, please. And, and because we did stop the conversation earlier on the resolution that we were discussing, that would discuss, that would entail, um, um, the agreement, the financial agreement, um, and on, for all transparency, um, for those who are listening, still hanging out with us, twenty-seven of, uh, our residents are still on. Um, I, I, I've approached the administration, um, with several requests. I'm, I'm sure that sometimes they may look at me like I have three heads, but I am of the mindset that, you know, I mean, you have to ask, and, and the worst that could happen is no, but I am pushing the administration to, um, seek out more community benefits, um, with, with respect to this, um, financial agreement, i.e. in the turn, in the form of building the animal shelter at the dog park. Um, also have discussed, um, with, uh, council, I'm sorry, Council President, um, Board President Trigg Scales, um, the need for a pre-K program, and I, I, I think that because that is also a need for the community, that that be discussed with, um, the developers, um, with respect to this financial agreement. And, um, I probably asked for the kitchen sink as well. Um, I know this is on first reading. Um, so I wanted to ask Mr. Trank, um, when can we hear back from the administration? Um, in advance of second reading with respect to some of the requests that have been made?
Um, we began the discussion immediately after you spoke with the mayor. Uh, Mr. Hanley and I and Mr. Gross had a lengthy conversation last Friday night and into the weekend. Uh, we're trying to get some pricing. I know the mayor has spoken to the superintendent on, on the items you referred to. And Mr. Gross has been looking at some of the items concerning, um, the animal control facility. So the short answer is, uh, our goal is always consistent, um, uh, with, um, your desire, which is by, uh, a week from tomorrow, Wednesday, when you get your packet, uh, to contain the final form. I would note two things that, um, Mr. Hanley has suggested and, uh, the administration uh, believes are appropriate. The financial agreement, uh, is likely to continue to look, uh, virtually identical to what you're seeing. What will change is the redevelop agreement, because what we'll do is, uh, bake in exactly, uh, you know, what the, the best we can possibly do with regard to any negotiation on those items. So it'll still be fully binding. And that, again, goes to your conditional approval tonight of the redeveloper. The only way it will become a final approval is if you're satisfied with the redevelopment agreement. So we will have it to you by a week from tomorrow, uh, for your consideration on March ninth.
Thank you. Um, and Mr. Hanley, um, since you've hung out with us all this time as well, one of the questions that I posed, um, to you, and I don't know if you've had it, um, you know, any, any further thoughts on the benefit to, um, and I know that Mr. Trank just said it, the, the, uh, financial agreement will look similar, almost identical to what this is now. However, um, I did request that we shorten the term of the pilot. I know that, um, East Orange or Orange just, um, um, closed on a pilot that is twenty-two years, as opposed to the typical fifteen and thirty that we hear. Um, I, and your position, and I, I, I'm, I'm having this discussion in, in in pure transparency for both my council colleagues and, and the residents. And where did you go? There you are. Um, so your, your position to me, if you can just, um, eh, share that with my council colleagues, I just want them to understand the conversations that I've approached the administration with.
Sure. So I, you know, I mean, we can go any direction you're comfortable with. Uh, I mean, it's your decision on a policy basis, but the benefits not near-term in the context of what we're talking about in this. And what we're asking for are cash payments, which are near-term. So, you know, we have to make a policy decision about when dollars are most important to us and, and, um, you know, the very backend years, we, you can always shorten term, but in the context of a rab bond, that pushes more debt service payments upfront, which causes us to receive less payments in the near term. Um, also, we are looking for dollars upfront. And just, you know, both the municipality and the developer care about dollars today more than they care about dollars when, you know, twenty-five years down the road. So it's a, you know, it's a policy decision, and we can do math inside of that. But certainly the taxpayers today get the most bang out of their buck from not shortening the term, but from taking as many dollars in the near term as we can get.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Hanley for that. And, and for the public's benefit, who was not with us yesterday during our discussion, um, I did bring to the administration's attention a bill that's pending. Um, I don't know when it's going to be voted on, um, legislatively. Um, it's A fifteen-seventy-one. Um, and in reading through that bill, there are some benefits, um, and incentives for developers um, across the state. Um, and I, I, when I read those incentives, I reached out to the administration as well to ask them what those benefits would mean, um, for us if they were to apply for them. And the mayor did go over, and I'm sure it will be in the presentation as well, once it's posted, um, that there are a lot of prerequisites for any developer to qualify for incentives like reimbursement in, in, uh, financing gaps. Um, and so I, I certainly just want the public to know that, you know, your, your elected officials, your council members are having these discussions with the administration. I'm sure that, um, sometimes they can be a little overwhelming for them when we're coming back to the table, but I think it is, um, the appropriate time to do so. Um, I don't have any other questions in this regard. Um, like, I want to stress what Mr. Trank said. If, if when they come back, this is not acceptable to myself or to, um, my council colleagues, it's not something that, um, has to be, um, passed. This is first reading. Um, and, and I encourage the, uh, members of the public to make sure that they're looking at the application that is posted online and, and be ready for, uh, public comment during second reading. Um, and certainly, of course, if in the meantime you want to reach out to any one of us for, um, comments or questions, please, um, share that as well. Do any of my council colleagues have, um, questions or clarifying points? Councilwoman Castellino?
Yeah, ju- just again, I can't stress enough to administration, get, the sooner this gets up on, uh, on the website, that the better. That's all.
Thank you. Uh, any of my other council colleagues? Comments, questions, discussions?
Council President, yes. And just to put the presentation up, the mayor also said that he would put up the frequently asked questions. And I think that's very important. We did that with Edison Lofts. It helped a lot to get the information out to the public.
I, I thank you for, for mentioning that, um, Councilwoman McCartney, because it, I, it slipped my mind earlier when Councilman Rutherford was talking. I, I thank you for, for mentioning that, Councilwoman McCartney, because it, it slipped my mind earlier when Councilman Rutherford was talking about, you know, how some, some pilots do benefit redevelopment. And in thinking back to Edison Lofts themselves, it was a few months ago when I shared this with the council colleagues that Edison Lofts is now, although not fully rented, I, I don't know where they are right now, and I won't put Mr. Thayer's on the spot, but maybe.
It was two seventy-five.
Two seventy-five, or three thirty? Is it three thirty-one? Three thirty-one. Even despite not being fully occupied, they're already making twice the tax payments they were when, when they were just, you know, the Edison factory. So I think part of those considerations, as well as I've shared with my council colleagues in reviewing those financial documents and those agreements, is the fact that in a place like Edison as well, it was hard to find someone who wanted to come in to develop something that is designated historic, because obviously there is more cost associated to rehabilitating buildings that are, you know, preserved. And so while I'm happy that they are doing over six hundred thousand dollars in tax payments, I look forward to them being fully. Oh, my God, rented. Thank you for that.
I was gonna say.
I know.
Sounding like me.
I know. And, and just for, for the, the members of the public as well, the application for the pilot that I'm referencing that's on the website is the page number where you can go and look at the table of the projected tax and pilot payments. The table is table ten. The PDF numeration on the top of your computer will be forty-five. And you will see where it says year one to fourteen. They're all pilot payments that come to the township. And then fifteen, years fifteen through thirty, they begin to pay percentages of the full taxes. So it's certainly something to reference. I think it's, it's better to see the income. Presently, our income from those two buildings is somewhere above six hundred thousand for one hundred and two hundred. In year one, and I, I agree with my council colleague, Councilman Rutherford, that year one is not likely to produce one point two million dollars, because, you know, they'll still be having to rent out. I think Edison Lofts has been renting out for two years now, if, if I am not mistaken, and they're almost full. So I agree with you, Councilman, but I, I, I still think the long-term benefits outweigh the, the concern for the first couple of years for them to be fully rented. Okay, I've talked enough. I'm so sorry. Do my council colleagues have any questions? Or comments?
Okay.
Councilman, did you say yes? I, I see you messing with your trying to.
Unmute, sorry.
No, it's okay. I got you. I saw, I saw you struggling. I got you.
Thank you. So can we go to I think it's page I just had it a second ago, and then I looked to the it's in, it's on page six. Annual gross revenue. At the bottom of page six, the paragraph that discusses annual gross revenue, annual gross revenue of the entity, which shall include but not be limited to all of these things. The question I have. So if they complete, if they complete this project, are, are they allowed to, what happens if they sell the project post-completion before the pilot, before the end of the thirty years?
Oh, go ahead, Mike. They, they sell the project, not the, we continue to have the pilot operating as the contract states.
And yeah, so this entire part, there's no, there, they can't sell it and negotiate any
No.
thing different.
Not, no, not as it relates to the pilot. Anyone takes, either takes assignment and
Will not.
and accept their obligations, or they could opt out of the pilot and pay conventional taxes. Those are the two options for a purchaser.
Okay. Above that, there's a paragraph that says allowable, allowable profit rate.
Yep.
So it's my understanding, I think their expectation, and I know, you know, market forces can change, but they're looking at about a six percent return. Is that right?
That's correct.
And the maximum they're allowed to generate from this project is twelve percent?
That's right. That's what the statute.
And if anything above twelve percent, they have to give that to the township?
Correct.
Is that dollar for dollar, every single thing above twelve percent?
Yes.
How do we come up with the twelve percent number?
They, the statute comes up twelve percent. And you have to provide, provide an annual audit that states what their profit is, and it's, has to be done by CPA and confirmed and tested such that you know, it's to prevent windfalls, and it's not, it doesn't occur that often, but it has occurred. I've seen excess profits paid to municipalities when there's a significant run-up in rents versus what's projected in the world.
But that twelve percent number is not something that we negotiated. That is something that comes as a result of this, of some law, statute, or something.
It's cited there.
Requires it, yes.
It's A forty-eight dash twenty, I mean, colon twenty dash three. I saw it.
It's the long-term tax exemption law states what excess profits, how they're calculated.
Got you. And, yeah, okay. So is, is it still on me? Can I continue to go through? Article three, page twelve. Can you help me understand what's, what's, what's going on? Is understood and agreed by the parties of this agreement, including the obligation to pay the annual service charge. This is our page twelve, for those that are trying to follow along, article three. The obligation to pay the annual service charge required under article four with respect to the project will remain in full force and effect for thirty years from the date of issuance, from a certificate of occupancy for the project, but in no event longer than thirty-five years from the date of execution hereof. Entity may construct the project in phases. Thus, upon the completion of any phase of the project, a term of thirty years for payment of the annual service charge for such phase shall commence. The total term for all phases of the project shall not exceed fifty years. If they are delayed in their construction, they can essentially, yeah, help me understand what that, what that means.
It, it's a limitation that is designed to prevent land banking. So from the day they execute the contract, if you were to adopt this in a couple of weeks, right, and, and would allow the mayor and the developer to sign the contract. The, it is, the law tends to give a tax payment that can last thirty years, but it recognizes that the day you sign the contract is not the day the project is completed. Right? So they have to do various things, get approvals, build the project, say it takes eighteen months or two years. Right? If they are delayed for reasons within or without their control, they start losing years on the back end of their benefit. So if it takes them six years to build the project, they have a twenty-nine-year benefit. It takes them seven years, they have a twenty-eight-year benefit and rolling forward. It's, it's designed to not give people an unlimited amount of time to exit, you know, to deliver their obligations within both the financial agreement and the redevelopment agreement. So they start losing financial benefit over time if they don't build quickly enough.
And in that case, so let's just say something crazy happened. It took them seven or eight years to get it going. Do they, do they have to pay according to the year one numbers that we have on the pilot? Do they lose that year and start at year two? I mean, where do the years, how does that adjust?
They're losing the years on the back end, but they, you know, they're, they're paying conventional taxes until that time. They don't get to start the pilot until they build the project.
Okay.
Right? So they're losing the end.
Got it. All right. I got it. Yeah, so you kind of answered for me one question, but just so that I'm clear again, on page thirteen, in our earlier conversation, you addressed this somewhat. So let me just make sure that I'm clear.
Sure.
Section four dot oh three, annual service charge. The entity shall pay to the township an annual service charge calculated as the greater of the, what is that, adjusted gross revenue calculation or the taxes otherwise due calculation or the.
Where are you reading from? Because you
Page thirteen.
Three, third, page thirteen, four point oh three?
Uh, yes. Article four, annual service charge. It's at the bottom of the page.
I see it. I just didn't hear you reading from the text.
So the annual service charge is the greater of either the adjusted gross revenue, the taxes otherwise due, or the unplugged annual service charge. And where I got lost is unplugged versus pledged service charges. And I know there's a table that lists them. I'm just, can you help me understand that better?
Sure. It's, it's a multi-pronged test that seeks to protect us. So they, they have to pay us the annual service charges calculated. The minimums associated with the percentage of conventional taxes, depending on which year we're in and which one we hit, or the minimums associated with the schedule that you see in the back. So we have a number of layers that are designed to protect us from getting, you know, not enough money. And those are the three tests in the context of that.
So why, why, why don't the TOD calculations coincide from a time standpoint with the AGR calculation? So, you know, stage ones, and, yeah, can you answer that for me?
AGR calculations are what's negotiated. So we have the, you know, we go ten and a half, eleven and a half, right? They, we, those are, we negotiated those numbers. And that's the way a pilot is calculated. But there are additional limits, and those limits are percentage of conventional taxes. And the amount we're receiving prior to the building being built. So like, we don't think we're ever going to actually hit those minimums. We hope we never hit those minimums. But they're protective of us in the event that things are not good. But we, we hope to always be collecting on the basis of annual gross revenue until maybe the last couple of years of the agreement.
So the TOD calculations are not something we negotiated. That's a, is that by stat the law as well?
The percentage of
You know, when stage one starts and ends, stage two starts.
Yes, those are, those are part of the statute, yes.
Okay. All right. So some of my questions were answered in our earlier conversation. I'm not going to repeat them. All right. So on page twenty-one, article twelve, compliance by entity with law. At the bottom of that, section twelve dot zero one, it says, "Any failure by the entity to comply with such statutes or ordinances shall constitute a violation and breach of the agreement." And does that mean it reverts to normal tax? Or what does that mean?
I, I mean, any violation of the terms of the agreement could cause the termination of the agreement, and Mr. Trank could describe it better than me, but the technical violations, they would presumably fix, because the values are important to them. But, you know, if they were to do things that were in violation of the agreement, the agreement could be terminated.
Mr. Trink, in that case, would they then revert to a normal tax payment schedule?
That would be the remedy, you know, again, there's a, if, if you go further into the agreement, there's a whole default section that starts in article fifteen. So as a practical matter, Mr. Hanley is correct, there would be a whole series of steps, but ultimately, if they did not remedy it, certainly, you can see article, I'm sorry, section fifteen oh six talks about remedies. So there's a whole process, but, but you know, the, the, Mr. Hanley ultimately is correct, but it would be, it would, it would seriously, as you can appreciate, affect their whole economics and their financing, which obviously is, is looking at all of these aspects. So there's a lot of eyes, and as Mr. Hanley says, you're getting a a certified audit every year that certifies that what the, the, the ranges are.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, but the default clauses are in there, in the, you know, unlikely event that they do, we know.
Hundred percent, bad actor, the, you know, the, you know, we write these things such that a bad actor can be penalized. We don't have a lot, you know, there are not a lot of experiences, although there are some where an entity does something that causes them to lose their pilot, but they're, you know, we shouldn't plan for that. That's not a normal course of events. It's an extreme.
Yeah, it's not planning, just to get clarification on what.
Yeah, no, I, I just don't want to present it as if it's an option. It, it's a, it's protective, and we, of course, would pursue it in the event that, that eh, you know, someone was acting inappropriately, and it had, there have been cases where that's occurred in the state, and people have lost pilots on that basis.
I think that, for me, I'm just double checking.
And, and those are on page six, starting sixteen, go page seventeen. It's a fault. Or in the article.
Yeah. All right. I, I think that's it for me. I don't know if anyone else has questions.
I, I do not have any additional questions. I know that I spent a considerable amount of time going through this over the last couple of years, so I and, and we've had recent discussions, so I don't have any other questions. Do any of my council colleagues have additional questions?
I just want to thank the administration for always being available on even Saturdays to answer questions.
And Sundays. And text messages.
Midnight.
Oh, right. Sorry about that.
Before we would, and we certainly appreciate it, before we, we move for a vote, I just want to also bring
Or we would, um, and we certainly appreciate it. Before, um, we, we move, um, for a vote, I just wanna also bring to the attention, um, with respect to the financial agreement on page two. I know that a lot of us, um, are hearing that we're giving up millions and millions and millions of dollars if there was conventional taxes that were being used. If the current owners simply rehabilitated their, um, their office buildings. Um, I accept the fact that they did not purchase the office building to rehabilitate them, but it was their investment and as owners, they do have that prerogative. Um, but I want you to understand also in the context of what it is that we're earning, um, tax revenues that we're earning now and with the pilot program, where we will be. Um, currently for those two buildings, we are at seven hundred thirty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-three. I wanted to make that clear, cause earlier I said about six hundred thousand, so I wanna correct the record. On page two of the financial agreement, it's seven hundred thirty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars and eight cents. That is the annual real estate taxes to the township. The projected pilot payment, um, payment in lieu of taxes or annual service charge um, will, will generate an average net revenue of approximately one million, one hundred fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-four annually with increases anticipated over the term. And to Councilman Rutherford's point, um, that's if those apartment buildings are completely rented, um, in year one. Um, a, a, as we've experienced with Edison, that is not the case. However, as we've experienced it with Edison, we certainly have benefited from that pilot because we are now generating twice as much the of, of, um, tax revenue than we were, um, prior to the, uh, the pilot at Edison, um, loss. So I, I wanna point that out so that I wanted to clarify that I said six hundred thousand. It is not. It's seven hundred thirty-five and it's one point five, um, million that we're looking at generating once the project is completed.
Council President?
Yes.
And I also point out that that would be, the, the ramp up period is the ramp up period, whether it's a project, a piloted project or not a piloted project. So any redevelopment or any development that's gonna go into that space is going to have a ramp up period. So to the extent that you don't get it right in year one, you're not gonna get, whatever you're gonna get, you're not gonna get it right at year one. If, if a project is, is developed over a three-year period, you might get some increases in taxes because of, of the improvements that they're making, but you might not. So it, it, it's, it, that aspect of it, which is an important point to understand, isn't really, um, doesn't really drive the decision-making this, cause no matter what you do, you're gonna have that.
Understood, and thank you for that clarification. Um, and, and I also, we, we keep going back to Edison loss, but we do have another, um, uh, redevelopment that, that was completed and it's beautiful. It's right on Central Avenue and they are, they are almost, I think, one hundred percent, um, at, um, rental capacity. And certainly have been assessed as such. And, you know, with that pilot, we also benefit. That's a different pilot because it's a brownfields, um, but certainly a benefit to the community as well, where it was abandoned, um, lands that are now, um, really nice, um, apartments, uh, buildings. So, um, Madam President, it, it, I'm sorry, I didn't look up to see if my council colleagues had anything else to add. Now, okay.
Council President, I did wanna say thank you for that because that's what I wanted to share in my notes. That what we need to be doing is comparing the existing conditions and the revenue generated now plus everything that Councilwoman Castelina inaugurated, um, before, when we had that previous discussion about the rent at, uh, Ten Rooney Circle, the three point one million for the library, the library itself. Um, the tax appeals, the standalone, I do like that to be added to the standalone, uh, annual shelter. All of the co-op locations, the affordable housing units, sixty-one units on, um, in this project, plus, uh, what is coordinated with forty-six Mount Pleasant Avenue at the library and the dog park. So, um, you know, we're, we're comparing the existing conditions now on the potential of this project. So thank you for giving the numbers.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance twenty-six forty-one dash twenty-one and ordinance amending chapter ten, section twelve point three of the tangible West Orange ordinances entitled sanitary requirements. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
I'll move. Second.
Councilwoman Castelina?
So this was the ordinance, not the last ordinance that, uh, I'm gonna vote, uh, yes, uh, for the discussion, but won't be supporting.
Okay, Councilwoman McCartney?
Uh, I'm gonna say no, because we did, and thanks to Hannah, um, and to you, Madam Clerk, because you did forward me, uh, ordinances that I had requested. Uh, what we are looking at does in no way compare to ordinances that Hannah did, um, share with us at the end of last year. So I am voting no on this until we see something that has a little more substance to it and, and something that we can actually work with so that it protects the neighbors, uh, the chickens, the hens, um, and the, uh, the people that want to keep them.
So, so, so can I?
We're, we're doing a roll call still.
Councilman Rutherford?
I am impressed with Hannah and looking forward to working on this in the future, but my answer tonight, my vote tonight is.
Yeah. Is no? Was that a no?
Okay, cut off there.
Yes, my, my vote is no.
Thank you. Councilwoman Williams?
No.
Council President Matute Brown?
Uh, for the same reasons my council colleagues voted no, I think we got a lot of work to do on this still. My vote is no.
But that's not to say we're giving up. I think we need to look at other ordinances to compare what it is that we need.
Absolutely, and Council, Councilwoman McCartney shared Maplewood's ordinance, which I, I thought had, um, and your, in your words, Councilwoman McCartney had a lot of teeth to it. It was a pilot program, certainly a very, very impressive program that they had there. And I said, I wanna be, be able to reach out to, um, our colleagues in Maplewood to see how their pilot program did go. And Mr. Tran, I am so, uh, sorry that you put in all that work, uh, to get us some ordinance, but certainly looking forward to, um, revisiting this.
So, I mean, I don't know, Council President, if you wanna see if one of your colleagues wants to work with the law department so that we can try to get it in form for further consideration. Whatever you wanna do to, uh, try to move this forward is certainly up to the council.
Okay, I saw Councilwoman Castelino and then Councilwoman Williams.
Yeah, so, so, so here's my issue with this because of, you know, I, I read South Orange ordinance and I know it's a pilot program. Unless you, you know, we, we, you know, we, we, we just passed something a few months ago. If there's a tree that's on a border, there's a discussion with, um, uh, with your neighbor, I really think, you know, I wanna, you know, put an addition on the back of my house. I have to, uh, notice, you know, two hundred feet. I, I really think for something like this, especially on small lots, um, you, you have to, have to get your neighbors to sign off on. I, I, I just think it's an invasive um, situation for, uh, neighbors that are next to each other and I, I couldn't support anything that you didn't have neighbor approval on. So I wouldn't even, you know, again, I just feel really strong about that because, you know, my neighbor three doors down, um, you know, he's using his smoker and that smells great, uh, but I smell it, you know, and the same thing with, with some of these. And, and I, I, I did see that they do have some of these, um, coops that are built differently, but of course they're, you know, a little more expensive. Um, someone may not have that kind of coop and, and prevent that smell. I, I just think it's so unfair that the past few years zoning, the health department, they've been coming to us for you know, more support with our inspectors, um, and budget season, we don't always comply or are able to assist them and, and now to give them, this is gonna be work. This is gonna be work for them. So I just, whoever's working on this, I think all those points need to be kept in mind um, for that, because this just is a, 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 um, you know, it's a nice idea. It's a great thought. I, and I read a lot of information Hannah gave me and I really, really, I think she's dynamic and she's done a great job. But, um, I, I, we've had this problem fifteen years ago, so it's not something that I'm just concerned with. I, I, I saw it. I wasn't elected official at the time. I was on Eagle Rock Civic Association at the time and there was multiple issues, um, with this. I just think whoever's gonna be crafting this or wants to move this forward, you really need to have all these considerations. So one last story to share with you, about fifteen years ago, um, there are residents on Ashwood Avenue that, um, a bunch of the, um, hens or chickens went underneath the, um, fence and raided our town pool. And they carry ticks, uh, some of them. So a lot of the residents freaked out. I remember this, cause I was, uh, a, a pool member at the time. And, uh, they had to do a deinfestation where people lay out their beach towels and lay on the, on the grass. So I just think there's multiple issues that you just don't realize. It sounds like a nice idea, but the more you dig deep and look at this, which I did, I definitely took some time last year when I was council president to Google this. And, uh, I, that's why I feel really strong. I didn't bring it to you slash year, to you last year because of all these other concerns.
Thank you, Councilwoman Castelina. Councilwoman Williams?
Um, I just wanted to add that, um, I have some concerns with, um, the ordinance as it's written, but I'm more than happy to work with our legal department to see if we can come to some resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. Councilwoman McCartney?
I was gonna say the same thing, that I would sift through the resolutions that we have received, the one that I just sent to everyone um, and, and see what we can do.
Thank you very much. And we have come to next, uh, Madam Clerk is our pending matters.
Yes, pending matters. Right now, we have the rent leveling board, uh, the consensus appointment listed, but we spoke about it earlier and that would be postponed until March ninth, when everyone had the opportunity to review, um, Mr. Rodriguez's resume. So I just, uh, is there any other pending matters, new matters or council discussion?
Have a question, my, my council president.
Yes, yes.
So I, I think we meet again as a council on March ninth, but the rent leveling board, um, does not necessarily have a planned, uh, meeting. I understand that. I did speak to, uh, Mr. Smoraldo, um, earlier today and per their ordinance, they are not required um, to meet unless there is an urgent matter that has been presented before them. However, um, I just wanted to again bring ba- based on my professional, um, you know, dealings on a daily basis, this is something that we do need to address expeditiously. Um, because we are in a pandemic, uh, through March thirty-first, there has been an extension of a no eviction order, uh, based on the state government of New Jersey. However, at that point in time, again, just based on professionalism, um, there are several people who have not been capable of paying their rent throughout the entire pandemic. However, homeowners are still required to pay their mortgage if there is one um, that they still have on their properties. So I do believe strongly that this is something that we do need to um, reenact and make sure our residents know is a resource available to them. Um, I am clear that we have updated the website. Um, I do know that the website does indeed have the most current, um, edition of the, uh, New Jersey rental requirements. Um, so that is very much appreciated and I am also understanding that there, um, is the intent of the administration to have a, uh, perhaps to have a page dedicated, um, to information on, uh, rental um, updates as well. So I do.
Did she freeze?
She did. It might catch up. Sometimes it just takes a second. It might just be on her end.
Some reports to our, to our residents.
I absolutely one hundred percent agree. I'm glad that, um, Mr. Smoraldo brought you up to speed. This is, um, something we've been trying to get done for, uh, I wanna say, um, six or seven months now, but happy that there is an appoint, a liaison and, um, Kibera Myers is an attorney who does this work for Nork and a great, uh, resource and, um, she's been looking to coordinate. So I look forward to the first meeting. I know that you're not required to meet, however, I think it's important, um, that there are some discussions and, and perhaps the recommendation could be, um, you know, an advisory committee that just does advisory for the public because the, the, the structure of this ordinance, um, does not call for that. But certainly a conversation to have. Councilwoman, uh, McCartney, I start your hand up.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. I wanted to thank Councilwoman, uh, Williams for her insight on this. And once, if anyone does need to read Rodolfo's resume, um, to read it and then maybe Madam Clerk, you can call for a voice vote so that we can have it in place before the, um, rent leveling board does have to meet. Sounds, if that's something we can do.
Sounds good.
Something we can agree on.
Yes. I'm, I'm fine with that.
Is everyone okay with that? And when does the rent leveling board plan on meeting? Cause i- is that necessary to do it prior to the next meeting?
They don't have a scheduled meeting. Um, a- again, I spoke to, uh, Mr. Smor- Smoraldo earlier today. They don't have a planned meeting or a scheduled meeting.
But I'm thinking that it would be nice for all of them to be introduced, even through Zoom, to let them know, like you're saying, if it's part a subcommittee that's advisory, that could be something that's created, because if they've never met, they still don't know who the other members are.
Indeed.
Yeah, um, I'd send everyone the, uh, I'll, I'll send you a better copy from my scanner. I just took a picture uh, for the, you know, so you have a copy of his resume right now. I mean, he's also long, you know, longtime community advocate for our community, so I, he's, he's all, he's always very, very supportive. He's there for the needs, um. I can't even express what he's done for the pandemic for, uh, the community, um, with his contacts with, uh, St. Barnabas, uh, just reaching out. And he just has such an outreach to a lot of renters. Especially in, in this area in, uh, Eagle Rock and, uh, behind Edison Middle School.
So if my council colleagues would agree, I, I'm very comfortable with Mr. Rodolfo's, uh, resume. Um, I have known him from the community, have worked with him in the community. I realize that, um, all of our councilmen may not have had that pleasure. Um, but if there is no objection, I am very comfortable, um, go ahead, moving forward with the, the recommendation to select him and identify him as the council, um, designate.
Uh, I'm, I'm going to ask that we wait so that we all have time to look at his resume and have, um, discussions with council, uh, with, uh, uh, Rodolfo Rodriguez. Um, I, I did also want to bring to the council's attention and the public's attention. I know we, we each had our, um, independent meetings with the mayor, um, uh, and for the public, uh, to be aware that the mayor did give us a broad, um, outlook as to what this year is going to look like, um, for the council, um, upcoming projects and what to anticipate. Um, he has asked that we discuss on March ninth during that agenda, um, the subdivision for Rock Spring Golf Course. Um, it's not a plan. It's just to discuss the subdivision. As you all recall, there are a hundred and thirty-eight acres of, of Rock Spring and we have not made application for green acres funding because there was a need to, um, decide on what that subdivision um, for potential development would be. So I wanted to give everyone, um, a heads up as to that conversation, the public and my council colleagues, um, included. And so what this would allow us to do is if we move forward with the subdivision, allow us to make the application for the green acres funding, which I am eager to see happen. Um.
Excuse me, Council President. So that's at the next meeting, March ninth?
March ninth. I did, um, and thank you for, for your, um, your leadership and, and, and helping guide, uh, my role as president. Councilwoman, uh, Castelino, I have asked for I have asked for in advance, if there is a presentation he's going to make to share, and with the public as well. It is from March 9th, so I don't know how much time we have, but I'm eager to have that discussion with respect to the subdivision in that regard, and.
Great, put it on the calendar.
Yes, thank you.
I just want to be able to notify the residents in that community that have been waiting for a presentation.
Yes, so I'll, I'll keep you updated, I'm not sure if, if that's going to happen in advance of March 9th, or it is the March 9th.
Okay.
Again, it's, it's the subdivision of the plan. And I think that's, that's it for right now, yes.
Can I just go back to the rent leveling board appointment?
Yes.
If, if the council needs time to reach out to Mr. Rodriguez and review his resume and ask him questions, and there is no, you know, scheduled meeting as of right now, I don't want there to be any confusion going forward, and as to, you know, the council's vote and all of that. So my question is, should it be listed for the March 9th meeting?
I, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, because I don't understand what the urgency is to do it prior to that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that there is, because there isn't a meeting, but I'm, I'm okay with the March 9th.
Is everyone else okay with that? Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have, unless my council colleagues have anything else they want to discuss. I certainly want to thank you.
I do want to thank you for putting the resolution on supporting the HR 946 resolution about the tax code and the, eliminating that deduction for the state and local taxes. So thank you for that.
We all have to do what we can to push our legislators as well, to do the right thing. So hopefully that'll, that'll, you know, bring us all some relief during this COVID period and beyond that.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Oh.
I was going to say, just before we adjourn, that with the resolution that we had on the Tax Collection Service Associates, we need to have a retirement party for all of the people that we are not seeing over the past year that have since retired. So that, I'm going to task you with that, organizing some kind of retirement, you know, if, if and when we can.
I look forward to the time we can get together.
And Council President, if I may, I'm sorry, I don't want to delay us any longer, but I just wanted to put on your radar, I would like us to acknowledge the residents who have been impacted by COVID in March, the end of March, April of 2020. The Human Relations Commission did a vigil to acknowledge those residents who had been impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. And I would like us to, on the eve of the anniversary, which is forthcoming next month of the pandemic, and all of the protocols that have been put in place for us as a community, to acknowledge in some capacity those who have been impacted and, and lost lives due to the pandemic. So I wanted to put that on the radar and see if we, as a council, can collectively put something together, whether it be at a council meeting, or whatever we come up with to acknowledge that hardship that our community has incurred.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams, and sometimes I swear we're on the same wavelength. Madam Clerk forwarded earlier this week a proclamation that some of the other municipalities are adopting for that recognition, so we can do something around that as well, with respect to acknowledging, you know, all of those hardships. I'll share those, that with you all as well. But thank you, that's a great idea. And thank you, Madam Clerk, for forwarding that for consideration.
You're welcome.
Okay, if there's nothing further, because we keep making these wonderful five-hour meetings.
I make a motion?
Yes.
I said get the motion to adjourn.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, and this is to inform everyone that when I end the meeting, it will end for both those on screen and off-screen, and no other business will be conducted. Thank you, everyone, have a great night.
Good night, West Orange.